Welcome to January 10th City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call the members.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Fiori.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbeto.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Council President Fiscondi.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of January 3rd, 2022.
All in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number three, the 2022 City Council Subcommittee Assignments.
Ordered, received, and placed on file. Madam Clerk, if I can take a moment, before we continue is to welcome the new year, the new city councilors, Councilor Silvestri and Councilor Cogliandro, and I also want to welcome back Councilor Rizzo and Councilor Fiori to the council. Welcome back. Okay, and if my colleagues don't object, I would like to request a suspension of rules of order for the purpose of taking up calendar item number seven, Paul Fahey, Election Commissioner. If we can have Mr. Fahey come to the podium. All in favor? If nobody objects, thank you.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the Election Commissioner requesting approval of the election warrant for the January 25th, 2022 district election for the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council, thank you for taking me out of order. We do have an election tomorrow, as you know, you approved the warrant at the last meeting, the special election for the vacant senate seat. This election is a one-off, to be sure, it's for the regional school district to approve or disapprove borrowing of the monies to build the addition to the new school. The district set the election, they set it for January 22nd, the hours are 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the location, we decided, as did virtually every community in the district because of the expected low turnout, to just have one polling place, so we're going to be at St. Anthony's Church. A postcard was sent out, some of you probably have received them, notifying people, everybody other than the residents of Ward III who currently vote there, that the voting location has been moved. So you have the warrant before you, there's also a backup document, which is a warrant from the Regional School Committee. We spoke to our legal counsel and we decided, some communities are taking that, and just going with that district warrant, we've decided to ask you to approve the city warrant per past practice. So happy to answer any questions and would seek your approval.
Any questions from councils?
Motion to approve, Mr. President?
So ordered. All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Okay, back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number four, communication from the mayor relative to an update on the Revere High School building project.
We're going to have Brian Dakin, will conduct a PowerPoint presentation to help us understand what the process is and what's going on, and if we have any questions, he will answer. Thank you. Brian?
Thank you, my name is Brian Dakin, I am the Project Manager from Left Field, we are the city's owner's project manager, OPM for the high school project, we also have Bob Bell here from Perkins Eastman, and we come with a whole number of slides, it'll probably take us, could take us about a half an hour to get through this, I thank you in advance for your time, but it's been a pretty complex feasibility study so far, and we wanted to give the council a detailed update prior to some important activities in the next few weeks related to selecting the final option. I'm going to quickly go through an agenda of the presentation we're going to give you folks tonight. First, we'll go through a little bit of an overview of the Mass School Building Authority process, where we're at in that timeline. As I noted before, we're only in a feasibility study right now, we're at the point of the feasibility study where the project needs to pick what is called the preferred option. Basically, pick the site, pick the version of the school that will get studied further moving forward. Bob is going to bring you through some of the work that the project team did related to programming, educational visioning, goals for the new project, and some community engagement that we've done to date. We're going to go through the detailed history of options that were studied, we're down to technically four options, it's really three, I'll explain that a little more as we go forward, so we'll go through those three, four options that are still on the table, and then we'll look at a timeline for some upcoming decisions in the coming weeks and months, and how to move this project forward. So out of the gate, I'm going to have Bob run through the MSBA process and some of the work we've done to date.
Great, thank you, Brian. As you know, the city has partnered with the MSBA, it took about four years for Revere High School to get into the pipeline with the MSBA. The MSBA, for those of you who aren't aware, funds schools across the Commonwealth, a penny of the sales tax in the state goes towards those school funds. They fund projects across the Commonwealth at a range of 31% to 80%, I believe Revere High School is in at about 79%, but I think it's important to note that that's the base rate that the MSBA establishes. They have a number of ineligible items, as well as caps throughout the range of construction costs, so the effective rate is considerably lower than that base rate. The OPM, I mean, the MSBA also oversees the forming of the teams, so what you can see up there is the city of Revere, the public schools, working with the MSBA, has hired Left Field as the owner's project manager, and ultimately Perkins Eastman as the architect. The MSBA has a well-established process that they conduct, which is intended to be inclusive and thorough. The overall timeline for a project such as Revere High School is in the range of five to eight years, but it's really, the first three years are spent, where we show the blue and the yellow, are spent doing drawings and getting preliminary approvals before it goes out to construction. And depending on whether new construction or renovation, that's where the range can come in, it can be two to three to five years for the construction itself. The half that we're showing in yellow on the screen comes after the votes and approval, and that's really the point, it's about a year and a half, where we develop construction documents. Where we are right now is in the blue bar, and if I take a closer look into what that encompasses, it's effectively the feasibility study, which we're nearing the end of, which is in two major submissions, and then schematic design. So where we are right now, at the end of the feasibility study process, that concludes with the recommendation from the School Building Committee of a preferred option, and ultimately votes from the school committee and the city council to see if the project moves forward. When we get into the last phase of this segment, schematic design is really just the robust development of that one option, enough so that we can put a thorough budget and cost in full design to evoke for the city. The MSBA establishes the overall process, which does include members of the School Building Committee, there are 11 positions that you can see here, that the MSBA seeks the city to fill, and these are the members of the School Building Committee that have those seats. They also establish the process, again, being open and inclusive, we have had up to 80 meetings to date, the majority of those, almost all of those public meetings, they include School Building Committee meetings, as well as workshops, and smaller meetings with neighbors, and also Regulatory Commission, and of course, teachers and faculty, staff, and students are all part of the process. The overall process that the MSBA has established is very much educationally driven, so it's not driven solely by cost or by sites. What they insist is that there is an educational program development, which includes the goals and the vision for the new school. Here, what you can see are some of the highlights on the left-hand side of what the vision was for the school, and on the right-hand side, you can see what is called the concept diagram of how the spaces come together, it's what we call a bubble diagram. This was developed as part of an inclusive group, a visioning group, that included a good cross-section from the city, that included teachers, parents, educational leaders, city leaders, regulatory agencies, again, parents, students, and business and community partners as well. So the vision itself included creating a heart to the school, one of the things that doesn't necessarily exist in the current school, is kind of a center and a community space for extended use by both students and inviting the community in. So that includes basically what we call the Cafeteria Commons, the idea is to connect those community spaces and services at that ground level, and on the floors above, so that the community has easy access and use, as well as the students in the extended programs. Another important aspect is create flexible and agile spaces, this is so that the school can be timeless and adaptable as education will change. It includes thinking of the entire school as a teaching and learning environment, not just the classrooms, but using every inch of the school. There's a full campus concept that's desired, that connects the landscape to the school and to education, as well as the community, and indoor-outdoor connections become really paramount for that. And that connects also to well-being, when we think about sustainable design, this will be a green building, it's required by the state, it's really about educational performance, health and well-being, and so that's what we connect daylight thermal comfort, acoustics, air quality, as well as the natural components that help improve test scores and create a calm environment for learning.
So what's on the screen now is a bit of a history of options that were studied by the School Building Committee, and systematically whittled down to the few that we're going to present in more detail here. I noted earlier that there's technically four options, the very top bar in this graph, anything that makes it to the right side of this graph is still an option, but the top bar is what's referred to as the code upgrade, it's an option that is mandatory to study on all Mass School Building Authority projects, it merely brings the existing building up to code, it doesn't add space, doesn't, for example, in Revere's case, wouldn't solve the issue of inadequate science labs, however, it does have to be estimated, it has to be analyzed, and you will see that when we get to the cost slide about what the baseline is. Next, jumping to the bottom of this, and then working our way back up, the sites you see in orange at the bottom were sites that were investigated around the city, including the old McKinley School Site, some private property with many commercial buildings down on Furlong Drive, between Suffolk Downs and the highway, the Stop &amp; Shop Site out on Squire Road and Caddy Farms, large undeveloped site up in North Revere. All of those sites were analyzed and systematically eliminated for similar reasons, either they included what I describe as bulk eminent domain of either commercial or residential property, and either they were too small, or they were too remote from the center of the town, but city, excuse me. So we wanted to, part of why we looked at everything was, what we like to do, and Perkins Eastman likes to do, is we like to turn over every stone in terms of where could this go, and sort of disprove along the way whether some host sites are even adequate. So those bottom sites were all eliminated back at the culmination of the last phase, which you see in that sort of, where the group of Xs are in the middle of the screen. Moving up the page, the purple options are all related to the idea of potentially housing this new high school at the Revere Housing Authority Site, that's something that we engaged, the RHA Board, about, attended a number of meetings, had some discussions with them. Ultimately, all of those options were eliminated without the support of the RHA Board, we, the project team, and speaking on behalf of the city, the city felt that those were not valid options if the RHA Board wasn't interested in pursuing them as well. So we don't have any Revere Housing Authority options. In green, you'll see Wonderland Options, that was always included at the beginning of this feasibility study for the team to look at. The ideas have evolved a bit, we've had options at Wonderland without athletic fields, we've had a few designs at Wonderland, we'll go through the, what the Building Committee deems the best design at Wonderland, and we'll talk a little bit more about how the city might acquire that land in a bit. Up top are all the options that were studied on the existing site, some of these were complete renovations, some of them were what we call ad renos, which means we'd renovate part of the building, build a new classroom wing, or some other program wing, along with it, sort of a hybrid between new construction and renovation. Those have all been eliminated, with the exception of one of the three remaining options is to renovate the existing fieldhouse, so there is a combined ad reno, it's mostly new construction, 90% of the design in that option is still new, but that's something that the Building Committee and some other folks asked us to study, and it remains an option. So, long story short, we're coming into the next few weeks, as far as project selection, to pick from either building on Wonderland all new, building on the existing site all new, or building on the existing site with keeping a piece of that fieldhouse, and we can explain a little more why, we looked into that in a bit. Keep in mind, the base code upgrade is always on the table until the final decision is made, per MSBA guidelines. That basically brings us to two sites, three real options, and Bob's going to walk you through the current designs for these, both of these sites.
So starting with the existing site, which is a new building on Aracola Park, where you can see here is the new footprint for the high school, shown in white. The existing high school is shown in red dashed line, which is superimposed over where we have fields in this diagram. The idea, of course, is that we would build the new school while the existing school remains operational. It does take away the fields from use while the construction occurs. After the new building is built and the students move in, then the existing building would be demolished, and new fields would be built on the site. A few highlights with this plan are, in fact, both sites, Wonderland and the existing site, are within the 100-year floodplain, and that means the building needs to be elevated in the range of seven to 10 feet off the ground. That is a challenge, but it also creates natural use of parking underneath the existing building, I mean, underneath the new building, so that's something that we've developed. In all cases, you'll see the roadway in the fields laid out, but I want to assure you, these aren't final designs, this is really part of the feasibility study, so there's plenty more designed to come, but both options include baseball field, multipurpose field, five tennis courts, separation of bus and cars on the site, and both options also include an extended car queue or drive onto the site, the intent is to pull cars off of the surrounding roadways. There's more we can go into, the only other highlight I'll provide here is that central administration or district administration is part of the new construction, and it is shown as the rectangular box in the upper-middle part of the site. If I were to quickly step through what the floor levels look like, we have 350 spaces underneath the existing building footprint, and about 300 surface parking spaces. One floor up, you can see some of the goals and vision come into play here, we have a CAF Commons in the center of the building, all the major activity spaces and shared spaces, such as arts tech, the auditorium, and gymnasium are all off of this major commons space, so it becomes the heart of the school. On the north or upper portion, you can see in blue, we show classrooms, and green shows science labs, those are the academic wings. Up one floor, you can see the heart of school is connected to the balcony level of the auditorium, the gymnasium is at this level, so the locker rooms are below the gymnasium, weights and fitness, there is a grand, very large grand stair, which we also call a habitable stair, that brings you up to these major spaces, so it'll feel like a natural flow to the stadiums and to the arts programs. And up the third floor, we see the media commons, which is also part of the shared space, additional arts and tech, and finally, the fourth floor, which is purely academic A look at the massing on the site, this is three-dimensional, we're seeing just an overview of what the building mass looks like, this is a perspective, so you can see the four-story academic wings, again, with some parking beneath, so that's raised off the ground, as well as the bulk of the existing building. The attempt here is to not only pull the bulk of the building away from the residential properties, but it also opens it up for good solar exposure, which is also tied to educational performance. Here, we can also see there's a dotted line running through the site, which is the existing culvert, the white line that traces around the building is a conceptual bend or rebuild of that culvert to allow this building to fit, which we understand, with the age of the culvert, is maybe warranted, and because of the shallow pitch, a chance to redesign and improve the culvert conditions.
So what's on the screen now is the schedule associated with the all-new build on the existing site, I'm going to spend a few minutes on this, and then hit the subsequent schedules a little quicker. The main reason is, from a high level, the schedules are all basically the same, all the schedules we have, have moving into the new building in summer of 2026, they vary a little bit based on that scheme, but to sort of zoom out here, we're back in this PSR, Preferred Schematic Report Phase, that phase culminates this spring, we'll go through the dates that we're requesting that the city make some final decisions in a few minutes. We then proceed into schematic design, which is a requirement of the Mass School Building Authority process, and that schematic design culminates in some updated, remember, schematic design is studying the one preferred option we're looking to pick in the coming week, so we run multiple options right up until about where we're at now, at the beginning of 2022, we proceed into schematic design with one option. That will come back to all of the boards, the School Building Committee, the School Committee, and the City Council next fall, it will also go to the Mass School Building Authority next fall, that is when the project officially requires approval, and the city needs to be authorized to secure the borrowing capacity and funding for the project. So same path for all these, at that point, when funding is secured, end of next year, we proceed into a pretty typical design phase here, design development into 60% construction documents, 90% construction documents, we bid it along the way. The Building Committee has made the determination that this is a CM@Risk, a Chapter 149A project, it's not a lump sum bid approach, so we are looking to bring on a construction manager through a public procurement process, probably some point this coming year, have the construction manager who's ultimately going to manage building the building onboard to do estimating during the design phase. An important, one of the minor differences of both of these schedules we're going to show you tonight are on these bottom bars. As Bob mentioned, that we know the existing site has some baggage, so to speak, underground, namely, there's a large culvert there, we are assuming that we both, we know we have to relocate the culvert around the building, we believe we might need an underground pump station to make that all work. So right now, the underground baggage, so to speak, including the history of that site's use as a clay pit, we understand, we believe we have it captured in the numbers that are in front of you, but on this option, we are looking to get in the ground based on move the culvert in summer of 2023. So this 2023 phase that you see here in construction, I would consider it a site prep phase, the other Wonderland construction you'll see starting a little bit later, because we don't have to get under there around the existing high school, and get that culvert moved in a manner that we can build on a construction portion of the site, and the school can operate simultaneous while the building is getting built. Finally, the, probably the other major piece of baggage that comes along with building on Aracola Park, since that is defined as a park, is the Mass State law, referred to as Article 97 kicks in, it is parkland, it must be replaced in kind, and there's about a 13-month process that if we are to build on the existing site, the project team will kick off in the spring. That process involves having surveys, detailed surveys done, and establishing that the space that the project will put back where the old school was, is in fact, an equivalent to what's there, what's currently Aracola Park. That's not a simple process, it's going to require approval by Conservation Parks Department, it's going to have to go through the city and all the way to the State House. Article 97 requires legislation be approved at the state level to basically pull off this little game of musical chairs of decommission the park, knock down the old building, put the park back where the old building used to go. So that process is unique to this site, the baggage we'll go into for the Wonderland options are related to land acquisition, eminent domain, the city is in control of this site, but Aracola Park is controlled by Article 97, and there is a pretty, you can consider that early permitting, if you will, but it's required to get here. Ultimately, as I noted, this construction for both options on the main site and the Wonderland option culminate in new school opening in 2026, that's the point that we would then proceed to demolish and abate the existing high school in this option, and replace it with fields. Those fields would be online by summer 2027, and by fall 2027, we'd be closing out the project with an audit with the School Building Authority. So generally speaking, I'll say in advance, before we get to the other schedules, the schedules are relatively neutral, they each have their challenges, but both move in at the same time, in the end, depending on if we have to demolish existing buildings or not, the tail end of the schedule can vary a bit.
So the next option, which is, started out as a study, is what you just saw, basically, new construction on Aracola Park, but it looks at keeping the existing fieldhouse. So the main building is off to the right-hand side, the fieldhouse is in the middle, shown in white, it's a different shape than the current fieldhouse, because what we have built around it are supporting locker rooms. The space between the main building and the fieldhouse are programs such as community health that might nearly connect the two buildings, but one of the things that we learned in our study is, of course, the reality is, students would be leaving the main building to go to the fieldhouse. We also can see here that by putting the fieldhouse in this location, it has displaced the multipurpose field, so we no longer have the contiguous or connected field space, we now have fields on separate corners of the site, and so it's a little bit less efficient use of the site as well, I believe less parking under the building is another drawback. This is just a quick look at the main floor plan, we're not here to show you all the floor plans, but very similar building pieces and parts, you can see the existing gym is actually the yellow rectangle, just to be clear, as Brian had pointed out, this is not a, just a reuse of the existing building, this would be a gut reno down to the skeleton, down to the steel, and a rebuild surrounding that structure, and then it would have supporting program built around it.
Pretty much the same schedule here, except way over on the right, so if you think about what we would have to do to get that fieldhouse renovated, we basically have to do everything through the center of the schedule the same until we open the new building in 2026. However, that new building, in this scenario, would not have a gym, would not, basically wouldn't have an athletic department, so we would need to then abate and demo our way into the existing high school to be able to renovate that. So the main difference and challenge of this schedule is that a new building opens in 2026 without the ability to fully support the athletic department or phys ed, and there wouldn't be that capability until about the end of 2027. One of the virtues of getting a construction manager onboard early next year is we'll vet some of these schedules and see if this can be compressed, but as Bob noted, this is a gut reno, we'd have to work our way into being able to create a new fieldhouse out there, so there's some amount of time in this schedule, basically from summer 2026 until fall 2027, where the high school cannot support phys ed and the athletic department, that's something worth considering. One thing that I'll note, that I forgot to note, on the all-new scheme, both schemes on the existing site, we believe are going to require temporary parking. on the existing site, we believe are going to require temporary parking to be moved to the infield at Ambrose Field, north of RMA. We looked at all sorts of options on how to displace the current parking at the existing site and really couldn't come up with any feasible options. So the project and the numbers that we're putting in front of you involve basically taking over all three fields surrounding the high school and the existing site back here in spring, summer 2023, and turning the infield at Ambrose Baseball Diamond into temp parking that will serve for the duration of construction. The project would then rebuild that field. I do understand that there's a city project going on to enhance Ambrose Field. We believe it's more focused on infrastructure in the park, the actual playground, not the field. But if this is the way we want to go, building on the existing site, we, the high school project team, will need to work a little bit more with the city to make sure we don't have any redundant scope there, to make sure we're not taking up anything that's newly renovated, et cetera. But I think it's an important point with either of these to understand that we're going to need to decommission all three fields at that site for this major bar of construction going from 2023 into 2026. The benefit of that is all three of those fields by the time we're in 2027 come back renovated and new.
And so the third option on the table is at Wonderland. What you're actually seeing here is zoomed in so that not the entire site is used. It's between two-thirds and three-quarters of the site we're showing in our initial study. We know that if this moves forward, we'll certainly try to tighten that up, but it reserves ten acres untouched approximately, so that it's can be developable land. In this option, you can see a very similar building footprint. It's modified slightly. The auditorium wing has rotated. This is intentional. We actually had many different configurations of a building on this site, but this building configuration that you saw on the previous site was preferred educationally as optimal and efficient. And so what we're looking at is a very similar footprint here. In this case, because the building is raised higher at eleven feet, but we are trying to navigate and make a natural entrance into the main portion of the building, it's not as efficient from an underground parking point of view. So you'll see that there's a bit more surface parking than underground parking on the site. But we have deliberately positioned the building into the lower-left or southwest corner because it is slightly higher ground. It is also preferred because of some of the vegetation surrounding it and pulls the building away from what might be the development later on. As was stated with the previous site plan, there's an intentional separation of bus and cars on the site. There is a very large car queue, something that'll be studied further, but we recognize the intent is every car that comes to the school within a certain timeframe must be off of the street, must be off of Route 1A for this to be successful. So we're continuing to explore that, but believe that we can accomplish that. The floor plan, I'll just quickly race through. Where we had three hundred and fifty parking underground previously, it's now two twenty five. The remainder is surface. As I track up through the building, you can see it's organized very much, very similar to the previous option that we looked at. The massing overall shows the existing building here in white, different perspective, puts the, what is effectively almost five stories closer to Route 1A, and then kind of embraces the site. The main entry, of course, is where we're showing the red arrow.
So again, very similar schedule for the Wonderland option here. Few subtleties are more along the bottom, so exactly the same design process into funding, design development. We would not be needing to put a shovel in the ground in 2023. That's unique to the existing site to get that culvert taken care of. We would start building here, basically at the beginning of 2024. And that brings us to the real challenge of the Wonderland option, being that it's not an option that is owned by the city. This would be an eminent domain scenario. And what we're suggesting by this schedule, this bottom bar, is that we have already started the initial steps that the city might take in the event that the council and the Building Committee and the School Committee want to go with Wonderland. We would plan on, if this is the option extending, asking the city to go into negotiations in the spring with the owners of Wonderland to establish a, what I like to call is a friendly eminent domain. We'd like to go into that process, and it's possible to go into that process with an agreed-to value for the land that the city needs to acquire. However, it's not essential. It's in the project and the city's best interest, because that could control the cost. However, even if there's, if there is not agreement from the owners about selling this site to the city, we would look to file eminent domain paperwork once funding, once the project post schematic design project passed next fall. And that would be about a thirteen-month process that leads towards the city having the deed in hand in time for 2024 mobilization on site. That process would look a little bit familiar to anybody who's gone through eminent domain. It requires two appraisals. The project has already hired one appraisal entity who is finishing an appraisal on the site. That appraisal is showing the land currently is worth about thirty million dollars. We'll go into how the project has prorated that to twenty-three million. However, that's probably the most debatable point that I know a lot of people might have differing opinions on, is can that site be acquired via an eminent domain process for the twenty-three million, thirty million range that is built into these numbers? If there were disagreement on that number, the city would still be able to have their hands on the deed and to issue a protanto payment that is basically the, and call it the initial offer, in an unfriendly eminent domain scenario. And the potential for this to go through court through 2024, 2025, 2026 could finalize the eminent domain value. So there's always going to be a risk on the Wonderland option of is that the right number? Twenty-three million to acquire what we need. We'll show you what that twenty-three million looks like in a slide or two. But the main risk of this site is not a park relocation. The main risk is land acquisition, and in the end, what will that cost? So if this is the option, we'll be commissioning another appraisal to have the two appraisals in hand. And we would look to have the schematic design phase where this, the chosen option, the preferred option, is getting designed and estimated in more detail. We would look to the city to participate with the project team for outreach to the owners of Wonderland to attempt to make this, as I noted, a friendly eminent domain. But if that is not possible, this process still can work. The main question mark is, what will a court agree the site is worth? And how can that be burdened during construction? So one of the other main questions, so I'm going to zoom out for a second on Wonderland. We're going to dwell on Wonderland for a minute. This is a parcel map of what's down there. It's actually a collection of parcels owned by the same owner. Everything down here, except this little red square, which is a private residence, is owned by the same owner. The area in green with this dash line is the twenty-four point five acres that the project has determined we would need. There's ways to shrink this if we need to. I don't think it can significantly be shrunk without losing athletic fields, but in a way, I think folks should consider that the safety release valve for this option in the event that it ends up in court arguing over the value after land acquisition. Regardless, if we go with twenty-four, five acres, that's what all these numbers are queued up to show. It leaves nine point five acres directly across from Waterfront Square in the hands of the current owner for potential development. One of the questions we heard a lot from the Building Committee and folks that attended our meetings was, well, you need to compare and contrast putting a high school down there with what that site might be able to yield if it were fully developed. So this slide, some folks at City Hall helped us work on this. We went through it with the appraiser who's working on the land, and we mocked up a number of scenarios. What's on the top is what's called the baseline scenario. That's no change whatsoever to how Wonderland is being used, yielding about a half a million in tax revenue a year, based on the assessment, the city assessment of twenty-three point five million. Again, our appraiser is putting a thirty million dollar value on that, this site. The three potential cases are really just a different mix of development. Potential case number one would be eighty percent commercial, about two point nine million gross square feet, twenty percent residential, nine hundred and twenty-five units, all at a two point five density FAR ratio. And if you want to zoom to the bottom right numbers here, the total projected tax that that site could yield under this potential case scenario is about twenty-one point three million dollars. If you adjust the dial to about fifty percent commercial, that equates to about one point eight five million gross square feet of commercial space and about twenty-three hundred units. That could yield about nineteen point two million annually in taxes. And finally, a more residential-centric development of all thirty-four acres would be twenty percent commercial, about three-quarters of a million gross square feet of commercial space and about thirty-seven hundred units. That would yield seventeen million annually. Again, these are all projections. The projections are based on the best and highest use of the property, Class A commercial space, so we're talking things similar to what's going to be down at Suffolk Downs, Assembly Row, Market Street and Lynnfield, and luxury market rate units. Those were the basis for showing some of these numbers. And again, these numbers are simply here as a counterpoint to what could that entire site potentially yield in tax revenues in the event the high school did not go there. So clicking forward, the bottom of the slide changed a bit. What would happen if the, if the high school is chosen to go there? We need twenty-four point five acres. The remaining nine point five acres, as I noted, can stay with the developer. We wanted to add to this, well, if that nine point five acres that remain, what would the potential tax revenues be? We are, as noted, estimating a, including in our budget for now, a twenty-three million dollar eminent domain land acquisition fee, based on the total site value being worth thirty million. The potential tax revenues on nine point five acres, we ran through on that potential case three, a residential-centric development, similar to what's at Waterfront Square. So in the hypothetical that the high school goes at Wonderland and that remaining nine point five acres via a special permit is allowed to be developed in the potential case three scenario, it would yield about five million annually in taxes. Over the thirty-year borrowing span of this school, that could equate to about a hundred and fifty million. It would also equate to about two hundred and ten thousand gross square feet of commercial space and about a thousand units. This is all just projections. The School Building Committee and the High School Project is not in charge of this potential work. They're not the decision-makers on this work. These slides were a response to what would, what is the impact on the city revenues-wise if a high school is there, isn't there, and what happens to that remaining remnant parcel? So, long story short, the thirty-year span, if that remnant parcel is developed, yields somewhere after the twenty-three million dollar land acquisition, a hundred and twenty-eight to a hundred and seventy-seven million. And you could jump back into this slide on these annual numbers and also do the math again. These are all just projections to have folks understand how tax revenue considerations impact whether or not the school should go down at Wonderland. So that jumps us into the next, the next sort of detailed topic here, that this is a roll-up of a pretty intense budget study that the project has worked on and will continue to work on. The four columns you see here are the four options on the table. The one on the left is the base repair option. Again, no new spaces, no new science labs, no room for any program that's not in the building. That is purely bringing the building up to all current codes. And to hit the highlights here, that estimate is about a hundred and eighty-one point six million. We estimate that it would yield about a seventy-six point eight million dollar MSBA grant over the life of the project, which puts the cost to Revere at about a hundred and four point seven million. The new, all-new-on-existing option tallies up to be about pretty much the same as all-new, but keep the existing fieldhouse. So these two options here are both on the existing site, and they're both tallying up to about three hundred and ninety-four million dollars. The anticipated Mass School Building Authority grant varies, because they effectively reward renovation square footage, so you end up netting a little bit more reimbursement if you're keeping older parts of the building. This middle scheme here, 1AB, is to keep the gym portion of the building. As Bob mentioned, it's demo it right down to its skeleton, build it back up, but it does yield more reimbursement. So the projected total cost to Revere for all-new-on-existing on Erecola Park is just over two hundred and thirty-one million dollars and just over two hundred and twenty-three million dollars for the, keep the fieldhouse on the existing. Lastly, you'll see Wonderland on the right, tallies up to three hundred and seventy-eight million. Notice that that's a bit less than the other two sites. Mainly, that's because there, believe it or not, is slightly less underground baggage on that site. We don't have the eight-to-ten-foot pipe underground that needs to be rerouted with a potential pump station. So in, from a certain perspective, Wonderland is a little easier to build on. It'd be a straight shot, single-phase construction, put a fence around it, build it, no impact to the existing operations of the school. However, it yields less, as you can see, in reimbursement. And the main reason why this is less in reimbursement is, in this scheme, we are not carrying demolishing the existing high school. The existing building would stay there, and the city and school could debate on exactly how to repurpose that building in the interim. Long-term, the School Department has expressed the interest of keeping that building so that it could be turned into a magnet middle school and alleviate overcrowding citywide. So the reason this yields less reimbursement is there is no reimbursement on demo and abatement, which is a very expensive process. So you're not spending as much. You don't have to knock it down and abate it, but you're also not getting reimbursement. So Bob noted earlier that Revere has about a seventy-eight percent reimbursement from the state, but that is based on eligible costs. You can never look at the total of an MSBA project, these biggest numbers up here, and multiply it by a reimbursement rate. It's just not the way the MSBA works. There are some detailed spreadsheets that we work through to determine what is eligible, what's not eligible. Some things are categorically ineligible, such as land acquisition. Some things, there are caps on, and we'll look at those caps in a minute. But the net result of the caps is that it drives down your effective reimbursement rate. If you really look at what the MSBA total grant would be, and you put it against the total project value, Revere's looking at a range between about forty and forty-two percent to net reimbursement. That is typical, about, well, I'll show you in a minute, but most of the MSBA caps got updated this summer, and the net effect is, we feel districts, cities, and towns are getting, in the end, about, you can rely on about fifty percent your reimbursement rate if you look at effective reimbursement, meaning you remove all the ineligible's, you take all the caps into account that they make us put in here. Land acquisition is carried below the line here. There is no land acquisition for the existing site, for the base repair, and based on input from an appraiser, we are plugging twenty-three million as the land acquisition value. This really puts the total share to Revere down here in the bottom. All-new-on-existing, two hundred and thirty-one million. All-new-on-existent, I keep saying all-new-on-existing, new-on-existing with a renovated gym, two twenty-three point two million, which is about seven point seven million less than all-new. And two forty, two hundred and forty-seven point two million is the proposed, the projected Revere share for the Wonderland option, which is about sixteen million more than all-new on existing. So quickly on those MSBA caps, they all changed this summer. These are the rules of engagement that every city and town in the Commonwealth has to go by, not unique to Revere. And really, what I know MSBA says and would say if they were here is, these caps are not in place to penalize any city or town. It is so that they can spread out that one penny on the sales tax that they get to all communities and address need across the state. So previously, the, one of the new caps is on fees. And these caps do not mean that, it's not a cap in that the budget has to be capped at this, and the budget can't go over it. It's, that's the length to which the state will reimburse you for. So these values do and can end up higher in the project budget. These are just the cutoffs for what the state is going to participate in. So three point five percent designer costs, sorry, OPM, and ten percent for the designer for the total construction cost, those were the caps. They've now made that sort of a double cap. It's three point five percent on the OPM, ten percent on the designer, but only up to five hundred square feet for construction. I'll show you on the next slide, and I promise you we're getting there, that the six hundred and fifty dollars a square foot is what we think this building will cost to build. That's based on a lot of current knowledge and current pricing on schools out there and projecting it forward to where we, where we know we'll bid this job. There are new caps on the contingencies. Used to be two percent, it is now a half percent. Demo and abatement is still a work in progress with the MSBA. They are putting new caps on demo and abatement, but they haven't set where they're at yet. The big one is the construction cap. So I just said it costs about six hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build one of these buildings. MSBA is only going to reimburse up to three hundred and sixty dollars on that. So there's always going to be a gap between what the building costs and the eligible component. You can see the big line on this, this graph at three sixty. MSBA participates in every eligible square foot and will give you your reimbursement up to that number. Anything over that number is fully on the local municipality's dime, so to speak. This is actually a screenshot of- of the MSBA's website. Any of you can go to it, massschoolbuildingauthority.org, click around. This is a live graphic on the web. It's not live here because I don't know how to do that with PowerPoint or presentations. However, we highlighted the high school projects. There are these dots on the screen. All these dots represent a project and its square foot value. You can see the years on the bottom. This rolls all the way back about five or six years. So we picked all the, the high schools that are on here. It does average out to be 650 a square foot. However, we're arriving at that number in a few ways. One is looking at what other schools cost. One is actually looking, working with estimators and looking at our other projects, seeing how things are bidding right now. And unfortunately, in construction, the line has just been going up and up for years. Obviously, this could correct between now and when we're bidding. We will be doing a series of estimates between now and when this budget's finalized and within the next few years that will reflect current market conditions. But what we believe right now is that this is a $650 per square foot building. That is what it costs to build. That's not over-the-top fancy. That is the, the types of new schools that you folks have seen built here in this community and other communities around here. So it's a large number. It's a number that even folks in construction, I think, are still amazed that it keeps going up. But we believe it's the right way to plan. We do not think there's a, there's any sort of correction imminent between now and when this is bid. But as I noted, it's definitely something that could be reflected if there is a construction in the market between now and, and when the budgets are finalized. Schedule summary, getting right to the end here. Again, schedules are neutral. This is simply saying when we would have to go through the park relocation process this coming April to the following May. Construction would start a little bit earlier on the two existing site options, June 2023, to get that culvert out of the way. We'd start in January 2024 for building at Wonderland. Move into the new facility, same at all sites. Just keep in mind this middle option, you'd be moving into the facility without the athletic department. It would take until fall/winter 2027 to get that done. So overall, I don't think that anybody really should probably make the decision on what the right way to go is here based on the schedule. The schedules are effectively neutral. Depending on how you look at them, the budgets are relatively neutral as well. I wanted to spend a second on this slide, and then we'll have a quick look forward. So this is a little, we tried to be as neutral as possible. We've gotten a lot of comments, had a lot of discussions with people on the pluses and minuses of these. But in a way, this might be the most interesting slide for some of you folks to look at and see if you agree or disagree with these. But up top is the all-new-on-existing, 100% new. We, the project, being as objective as we can, feel that some of the advantages of that are, there is no land acquisition that's required. The existing traffic routes, for better or for worse, are maintained. It's where the building has been. It's where the building would continue to be. It is comparatively the most pedestrian and bicycle-friendly location. It's located in the heart of the community. Even though we would lose access to those fields during construction, both Aracola Park and Ambrose, they would be redeveloped at the end of the project. And also, the culvert would be redeveloped and upgraded. It would not have to be something the city has to look at in the next 10 or 15 years, anyway. The, the minuses, so to speak, of the all-new-on-existing are that Article 97 park relocation process. It's an intensive process. It'll take all of next year to do. The existing building would be demolished and is not retained for a future middle school or expansion of the school system based on enrollment. This would severely disrupt on-campus activities for the four to five years we'd be building there, and it would severely impact abutters. The existing site has comparatively a lot more abutters than Wonderland. We've heard from many of them. And this is certainly, both options on the existing site would be much more disruptive to the, the school operations and neighbors. You would temporarily lose Aracola Park and Ambrose for the four to five years. It's a very complex phasing project, where I mentioned Wonderland is a single-shot construction, build it all at once. This would be phased into about six or seven different phases to get this all done and stay out of the school's way. That creates a, a potential for a little bit longer schedule. So the middle option here is keep the fieldhouse. It is the most cost-effective option. Part of that is, is what I noted. You get rewarded a little bit for renovating space, and you're still getting the benefit of the MSBA participating in demo and abatement. The renovated fieldhouse is, depending on how you look at it, either 5,000 or 10,000 square feet bigger than what the MSBA would allow you to build. Now, that's a real cap. MSBA will not allow us to build over a certain size athletic facility and gym facility in the new building. And the root sort of option of keep that fieldhouse is, it's, again, depending on how you look at it, either 5,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet larger than you would be able to build in the all-new option. Some folks also view it as a benefit that that's, freestanding building might be more accessible to the community. However, the flip side there is, is that the athletic space is not available for a year plus when the new school opens and until we have to renovate our way in there. And ultimately, permanently, the athletics is a little disconnected from the heart of the school. Moving down to Wonderland, at the bottom, benefits, it maintains the existing high school and site for the potential future use as a middle school and our community center. There is no disruption to school operations during construction. There are comparatively less impact to abutters. Single-phase construction is a lot easier, less risky to build than having to phase it out, and there is no Article 97 process. Negatives to Wonderland, it is definitely the most costly option. The land acquisition value, as I noted, is plugged at 23 million. It could end up higher than that. There's also the component of potential lost tax revenues that we went through earlier. You get a little bit less efficiency in reimbursement, and you have all the risk associated with the eminent domain process. Another sort of, to be fair, negative we put here is, I think a lot of people do view it as a, bit of a harder spot to get to and potentially a little bit more to solve in terms of traffic. And those things all do ripple into a little bit longer of a schedule.
Point of inquiry.
Sure.
State your point, Counselor.
Mr. Dakin, how do you, how do you say that Wonderland is the hottest place to get to when every single bus that goes throughout the city and every neighborhood throughout the city can be reached there by bus? How do you come to that conclusion?
I think it's really that it's, it's a little bit further from the center of the city. However, I don't think it's a, I wouldn't want to cast it, and I'm not trying to cast it as any sort of fatal flaw about that location. I think it's just trying to be a bit objective that it's a little further away. It's, it's across a few highways, but it's nothing that the project couldn't mitigate and work with the school to make sure the access was okay and busing was okay. Jumping into the, the last slide here, a little bit of a look ahead of where we're at, what kind of decisions we, we need here. On December 16th, we started going through this sort of culmination presentation with the building committee. We ran the school committee through it on the 21st, and then we went back to the building committee on January 6th to just debrief on how it went, show them some updates that made it into your slide deck tonight. That brings us to tonight. What we're, we're really looking for is input, and the decision hasn't been made yet by the building committee as to which site to recommend. We're also going to bring this presentation, I'm gonna click forward for one second and come back. This is simply an ad that's out there on the Journal website. The school has pushed out for a community forum tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. It is remote. Sorry, it's, what is it?
Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday, thank you. It is at 6 o'clock. It is remote. We have interpreters on board. We're gonna go back through this presentation and take more questions from the public. We've done three of these forums to date. We're gonna do one more tomorrow. I keep saying tomorrow. Sorry. And really, what's in yellow here is what we're asking these committees to, to really sort of move forward here. We're looking for as much input as we could get tonight. I understand a lot of folks might need some time to look at this, and we might need to get more opinions a little bit later. But right now, the proposal is that January 13th, later this week, the building committee recommends which option they would like to go with. It is the building committee's role to recommend the option. And then we wanted to bring that recommended option back to the school committee and city council to see if there is agreement. If there is not agreement, we'll go back to the building committee, and ultimately, we will work it out. These are the, we think between these three options, professionally, we think all of them can work. We think you guys have a hard decision on your, on your plate here, but we believe all of them will work. If all three of these committees are in unison about the option, we're gonna proceed forward right away. If they are not, we have a little bit of time between these dates and March 2nd, when we owe the School Building Authority the preferred schematic report that basically picks the preferred option and allows us to go into schematic design. That March 2nd deadline could move if it needs to. However, we would need permission from the School Building Authority to move it as it leads to a May 4th Board of Directors' approval of the city's decision. Once all those stars are in alignment, we would proceed into schematic design, and we would continue studying that preferred option more detail. If it's the existing site, we would need to jump all over that Article 97 process to formalize moving the park before it's done. And if it's Wonderland, we would need to jump all over attempting to negotiate a land acquisition value. All of that points towards, regardless of which option, it all points towards an August 22 completion of schematic design. We're a whole nother package with one option, with a whole lot more design added to it, a little more detail, and on numbers would come back to all of these committees for approval and go to the state for approval. That would lead us into the later parts of our schedule that we walked through earlier tonight to, to keep towards that 2026 summer move-in of the new building. So with that, I'm all set. I thank you again for your time, and we look forward to some of your questions and trying to get the best version of this project forward for the city.
I want to first thank both of you for the presentation, and I know we're gonna have some questions from the councilors as well as probably from the public. So I'd like to-
Mr. President, through you. Before we even start, can we find out what the student population is, the growth and things of that, so we have a tangible understanding of what's going to happen in their future?
Sure. Okay. Thank you. May I continue? Okay, thank you. So with that being said, what I'll do is I'd like to open it up to the councilors for some questions and, and have them answered, and then we can move forward to the public, if you don't mind. Let's start off with Counsel Fiore.
Gentlemen, thank you for presentation. Initially, at the Revere, existing Revere High School site, as a parent, I'm glad to see that there was going to be egress into the American Legion Highway. However, can you speak to the existing exits and entrances? Because those have been crucial concern to the people in the Cary Avenue area, East Mountain Avenue, as well as True Street.
Sure.
Yeah, I can start by answering that. One of the things that we were looking at is primarily, well, first, a separation of bus and cars. So on the Aracola Park options, what we're showing is cars predominantly coming in on School Street. It's the longest queue that we can develop. The building is now set further, deeper into the site, which helps pull a lot of cars off of the roadways. But what we've found so far, in, in still awaiting further traffic study results and feedback, is that to create numerous outlets for cars, options, so the idea would be that, that cars may have, or parents may have a number of, of options to exit the site, including back out onto Route 60. That would not be an entrance but would be an exit. Currently, we're showing buses that are coming in, similar to Romney Marsh. In fact, using that same entranceway as well as service, which is the, the options actually share service. The, the kitchen and loading areas face each other, the new building to Romney Marsh. So we're trying to take advantage of what exists already, and, and that helps us to separate buses.
So specifically to True Street and Cary Avenue. No intention to change anything?
Well, what we're seeing is, we could create, we're, we're not being definitive about what streets we will connect as, as far as entrances or, or exact exits, but we know that there's an option to have, have cars exit on, on Cary, as well as, as further down along the, the southern edge of the site. And on True Street, we did look at possibly, you know, that as an exit. We know that where True Street comes out towards School and Broadway, it's a little complex. So we're, we're looking at options there. But at this point, at this level, we see that there are a number of options. We're not definitive on what streets would, would be utilized.
Because these people live with that burden for a long time. Also, I didn't hear any mention of eminent domain takings as far as residential. Are there any intents?
No, no. The, the existing site options have systematically eliminated that. It was something that was studied and something we got a lot of feedback on, understandably, but it was eliminated by the building committee. So the only eminent domain action on the table is Wonderland. No, no eminent domain. And what I would say, Counsel Fiore, on traffic is, is really nailing down traffic and vehicle flow regardless of what, what option we do is going to be one of the primary focuses of schematic design. And I, I know that sort of answer of, we'll get there, isn't always, isn't always satisfying, but we have a lot of options of in and out on the existing site, and we will have to work with, with these bodies in the community to figure out exactly how to pull it off correctly.
And that's something we'll be following. As far as eminent domain, I'm glad to hear that it's off the table. You know, prior to being sworn in, there was this thing called redistricting, and they took some homes out of my district in that area around Revere High School. So I would be of the position, they can take the homes out of my district, but they're not gonna take the homes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I also would like to mention that we're gonna have a committee of the whole come January 24th for further discussion on this. So let's try to keep, I, I know the presentation was an hour, but let's try to keep it brief, and we can also, if you have any questions, come the 24th, those are up for discussion as well. Counsel Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Dakin, and your partner. You know, obviously, Counsel President, I've been on the committee, so I've been privy and seen a lot of this over the last, well over a year now. I just wanted to make sure that, and again, there should be lots of dialogue and questions in regards to both site options. This is the feasibility of the site selection. You know, so, and Mr. Brian, Mr. Dakin, you could probably attest, you know, let's just say, for instance, if, if Wonderland was selected, you know, there's a, there's a hefty, they're both a hefty price tag, but there's potential that we wouldn't need to do all the fields. Like, it, it would be an added luxury. We could potentially renovate the current site, existing fields, and, and remove some money off the project. Those are some of the things that can be, can happen down the road post-site plan. There is, and I know you'll stress this, Mr. Dakin, there is a timeline to get the site selected so that this process can move forward, and there could even be the threat of losing an entire year. So, and again, not, not that we should force anything down anyone's throats, but there's been a lot of conversation, and there's still gonna be lots of conversation to move forward. So what will have to happen by the March 2nd will be a site selection. First, it's gonna have to come from the, the school building board, then the school committee, then the city council, of course. All three bodies have to approve one site. It's gonna be, well, 1A, 1B, or basically Wonderland. So that site selection will have to be chosen. And again, I have a lot of great feelings about both sites. I think that they both could work. Certainly, do I have a favorite? Yeah, I do. I'll leave that up to, we'll continue to discuss, but I have some, you know, I have some concerns on both ends. And if we can make something work that works for all, certainly. But I'm not gonna press, one thing that I want to make sure that we should be careful of is, we all have opinions, but we shouldn't be pressing our opinions on everyone else. You know, let, let, let the body decide for the best for all, not just for you, not just for one person. So that's just something I would, I would stress. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Keith. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr.
We're gonna just go down the line to make it easier. How's that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. You mentioned the culvert in Revere High School in the field. Revere is made up of many streams and culverts along the city. My concern is that when the water table rises, the culvert rises. I've seen the Beachmont School sink two feet. I've seen Garfield School in their parking lot get flooded, because I used to be a teacher. So I used to go to all these schools. When you put a underground pumping station in there, where is the water going to recede?
So one of the things that would have to happen in schematic design if we're building on that site is to commission a hydrology report point-to-point on that whole line. So not just limited to what's going through the, the site. That whole drainage basin originates up on Park Avenue, around the stadium and between the hills up there, and basically outfalls down past Amazon, near Wonderland, actually. So to really figure out what the right thing to do to that culvert is, is we'd, we'd hire the appropriate engineer to become part of the team to study the entire line and make recommendations on, over time, what's the right way to upgrade the entire line, but do the piece that needs to get out of the way for the city. It might or might not need a pumping station, depending on those calculations. But as you referenced, these types of calculations only get trickier over the years, the bigger the storms get. And I think that would be an important component to figure out the entire drainage line to get the piece we need to get right.
Counsel Maravita?
Thank you. Mr. President, just for clarification, so at the next committee of a whole meeting, we can offer feedback, correct?
Yeah, you, you have time- Yeah, you have time to review that package and the 24th, January 24th Committee of the Whole at 5:00, we'll have an entire hour of questions, Q and A, and any further discussions on it, so.
Excellent. So I had a couple of questions, but Council Fiore actually asked them already. As far as walkability, currently, the eastern part of Massachusetts, eastern part of Revere, students can walk down Harris Street, and there's a little path going across Ambrose. What would that, would that be redesigned? Would that still, would that exist after the project is constructed?
The intent is to keep that. Probably enhance it as well, because, you know, in the existing location, walkability and trying to improve the conditions for students to walk or bike would be important part, it's usually an important part of what the MSBA focuses on as well. We see that roadway being enhanced and it's an option that we'd be looking at as far as an egress as well, and whether that connects or disconnects from Harris remains to be seen.
Thank you. As far as Article 97, are there any, so when we redesigned, maybe Dr. Kelly may know, when we redesigned the soccer field, when we placed the soccer field there, there was obviously an Article 97, correct, conducted? Or no?
No, I think that's been-
That's just, they just make sure you're not using conservation land incorrectly, right?
Yes, and I think there are rules associated with upgrading lands that are parks that those projects probably went to. This is rules associated with relocating. Even though we're just relocating it on-site, I don't believe that an Article 97 process has had to happen on that existing site to date.
So how often are there issues with Article 97? And usually, if there is, what's the average delay?
Sure. It definitely, we view this based on our experience and Perkins, Eastman's experience, that since we are able to replace the park area one for one, and since it's happening on-site, sort of points it towards, I don't want to say it's a slam dunk, but it's very high likelihood that that all works out. The only wrinkle we have is that the park's not going to be there for a few years. That is typical of a lot of Article 97 processes where the state and all parties agree that, you know, to upgrade it, we would, if we were renovating it in place, we'd lose it for a year, year and a half anyway. So we think that since we're able to replace it one for one, we're not trying to shrink it, we're not trying to take anything away, we can match its existing features, and it's not technically leaving the site. We think the Article 97 process is relatively low risk. However, we do ultimately need parks to approve that, conservation to approve that, city council to approve that, and the state house to approve that. We need someone to sponsor, build, the whole deal. So it's a complex process. If things go wrong in that process, it could stretch out that timeframe a little longer than we're showing it. We're showing it as about 12, 13 months. However, we don't see anything on the horizon right now that we think is going to imperil that process. We think it's high likelihood of success.
Thank you. And one quick question. So as far as, I'm not sure of the technicality of how they grade the high schools, like for instance, I know like in 2011, they upgraded like what the standard science lab should be in a high school. So this project is going to be eight years, eight years in the works. So if, is there wiggle room, if there's something we need to change to bring it up to top standards?
Yep. I'll start that off. We basically will be designing and estimating whatever option is picked until a shovel hits the ground. And we'll, we are beholden to any updates to what the school building authority implements. School building authority has rules about science labs to make sure all communities are up to a certain par. And if those guidelines are updated, we'll review them with the school department, make sure they're implemented. But the final design in terms of room configuration, down to how a lab would be configured, will have flexibility for the next few years, really, until we bid the project leading into 2024. So the big things, like where is it located, and plus or minus, where does it sit on the site, those are the items that we need to ice now, in the next month. The specific configuration of, you know, do we move parking here, do we move parking there, do we, you know, tweak the fields a bit, do we move things around inside the building, that will continue in an iterative process for the next year and a half.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation.
Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, excellent presentation. I understood everything. I didn't agree with everything, but some questions. I have a concern about the construction of Erecola Park, where, as you mentioned, there was a former clay pit, which I remember. And I have a concern, and I know the engineering these days take care of things, but I'm concerned about the weight of the building on that clay pit, you know, over the years, and how much sinking would be affected. I remember the old Garfield School sank like a half an inch every year. So, and the building was quite cracked after several years. The other thing that I didn't hear is, if we went to Wonderland, you still were including the new fields. If we didn't touch the old fields, we still have them. We still have the baseball field, we have the soccer field. Why would we need another new set down at Wonderland when you already have that? And so that would reduce the amount of eminent domain taking on that. Now, it was my understanding that the overall acreage for a building is 10, 12 acres? Is that about-
It's about accurate, yes.
Okay. So, you know, I would like to see a, something put together without the fields on that 23 million at Wonderland.
Understood.
With a reduced, would reduce usage, use of lands, which will reduce the cost of the eminent domain proceedings and the cost of construction, because you're not building another fields, another recreation. I'm into recreation athletics, that's my thing. And over the years, I've always seen when we build new buildings, the loss of recreation space. And I'm not saying totally, but a reduced, a large reduced amount, which bothers me. And I, you know, and I say, if we're going to go to Wonderland and not need the fields that we see, a reduced number, on your thoughts, you know, for your future things. And may also say, if we went to Wonderland, there'd be less disruption with the people in the Cary Ave and East Mountain Ave properties in the other side, in construction and the noise that they would not have to go through if we went to Wonderland.
Yes.
So I think that's a thing. And one other thing, if I may say, going from Wonderland over the railroad tracks, the Amtrak into Amazon and the pumping in space, there is a paper street there, if I'm correct, going from the railroad tracks out to the American Legion Highway. And that could be a potential walkway for the kids once they do the Amtrak overpass with the, whatever we're going to do over the train. So that could be a potential, so the kids don't have to walk all the way around to Bell Circle, you know, to get home. So those are my thoughts, you know, please, you know, give some thought to those and come up with some numbers.
Sure. Thank you, Council Nowosowski.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Go ahead. We have been keeping our eye on the commuter rail station potentially landing there, and I think that project, if and when it moves forward, we'd be able to develop in tandem, we'd still be designing, we'd still be putting the final touches on the design for Wonderland. And I think if those two projects can happen in tandem, a lot of those connections you talked about back towards the existing site would become very important. I think they also would help support the idea of going a little bit less on fields at Wonderland, because students could much more easily get back to Erecola Park. At least right now, we sort of carried the two fields at Wonderland as kind of an apples to apples, but your point is 100% understood. And I've been, I've been talking about those fields as sort of the safety release valve for if land acquisition value goes up. However, we'd have basically all of schematic design all of next year to make those decisions, regardless of land acquisition value, do those fields need to be there? Do we try to shrink down that 24.5 acres to something smaller to leave more land for development, tax revenues, et cetera?
Please look into those, I appreciate it. And I'll say, there's much less aggravation, if you want to say, if we didn't do anything at Erecola Park. You know, you wouldn't have to, you can still keep the old high school for the middle school, which I think is a good idea. You wouldn't be losing, you know, parks for seven years, you know, during the construction. So, you know, those are my thoughts on it, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Council Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments and then just a few questions. First off, along the same lines as Council Fiore, I'm glad, and I had always heard that if we were to remain at the existing site where the high school is now, that there'd be, at one point, I remember hearing significant takings, and there's nothing worse, in my opinion, than to throw people out of their homes, that's all residential down there. And unfortunately, that was the case with the new Hill School, we had to take a few pieces of property, and it's never, it's never an easy thing. As it turned out, and to be in compliance with Article 97, we actually had moved Hill Park and those tennis courts over to St. Mary's, which, that was another eminent domain taking we had to make. It was a pretty friendly eminent domain taking with the archdiocese, and it worked out for the city, because we did not have control over those little league fields up to that point. And now the city owns those little league fields for perpetuity, so we don't have to worry about that ever being sold. So that actually was something that worked out, but to have to go in and take pieces of property to accommodate, you know, like the new facility, was never something that I had a real good feeling for, to be honest with you, after going through it once. So that's very, very good, and that's good to know. The other thing that you had brought up that is certainly a consideration is the lost tax revenue. It's not just the cost of the land down at Wonderland right now, it's not the $30 million price tag, but it's the, what are we losing over a period of time? So that definitely factors into, I mean, now, that would all, I guess, you know, be based upon what type of development are we looking at down at Wonderland? So, I mean, if we're not looking at any type of burdensome development that, you know, with a price tag really isn't going to be worth what it would mean to the quality of life for the neighborhoods and things like that, that would all have to factor in. But that, but that's a conversation for down the road. A few things that I just wanted to ask is that if we do decide that the existing site, the existing high school, is the best location, okay? If the city council, the building committee, everybody's in agreement, school committee, that that's the best location, well, we're going to lose that central middle school, right? So what is the long-term in terms of our middle schools? Do we have enough seats that we're going to be able to forecast out in terms of having enough middle schools? If we don't, do we have to go back to the drawing board and look down the road four or five years from now, looking at building a new middle school? Do we have any numbers or estimates on student population? And, you know, going forward with this, with this school building project that this city undertook, I want to say, close to 20 years ago, I don't know exactly how long ago, but it's close to 20 years ago. Actually, it is 20 years ago, because I think Mayor Haas was in when this whole thing was developed, so we're talking at least 20 years ago. And when these, the five schools that were built under that school building plan were already, by the time they were completed, we were already short-seated. We didn't have enough seats at that point. So I'm hoping that what we're looking at here with the new high school and the design of the new high school is going to account for a growing population, a growing student population, and obviously to be in compliance with, you know, with, you know, the Mass Department of Education and what we need to provide. So, you know, I don't know, I'm assuming all that's been considered.
Yes.
Yeah, sure, sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, so at least starting with the new high school, the new high school is the approved enrollment through the state, and they very tightly control what enrollment is for these projects, is 2,450 students. That is factoring in for growth at the high school level. It's a couple, handful of hundred beyond what current enrollment is. So we believe that's captured in the existing project scope. You're completely right. If, in fact, the high school is built on the existing site, one way or the other, whether it is or isn't, there's probably a future middle school project. If the, if the high school is built at Wonderland, the future middle school project could be hosted at the current site. If the high school goes where the current site is, that middle school project realistically would have to be hosted at one of the middle school sites, which, knowing them all, is pretty restrictive, not sure it'd work. Still, this project, the high school project, would have to be completed and closed out with MSBA. Then Revere would have to apply again into the MSBA pipeline, pretty much apply again with all middle schools on the docket, and then study if anything could happen on those existing sites. I'm probably on the skeptical side of that. Otherwise, come up with a different site. So we don't, I don't know of any sort of magic bullet. I assume by then Wonderland would be developed, and this hypothetical, because by the time, meaning there wouldn't be a parcel of land like Wonderland that the city could move on to fit it. So I think it becomes just a much harder riddle to work out a centralized middle school without saving the existing site for it. You could still do the project, still go through a feasibility study, you'd have to start with the existing sites where those middles are at. I think it would prove out that it couldn't fit there, and it would then turn into, oh, where could it go? And all those signs probably trend towards some type of eminent domain situation.
Right. Well, thank you for that, thank you for that, Mr. Dagan, appreciate that. As we look forward, and we just talked, I think Council Nowosowski brought it up, that paper street that's going to lead, you know, potentially, if the, if the new high school were located down at Wonderland. And that paper street would bring you out to American Legion Highway. And I apologize, Mr. President, but this really, it has nothing to do with school building construction, but I just drove by Bell Circle when school was letting out, maybe two or three weeks ago, and it's a circus down there with kids. It's a very unsafe situation, and has been for years. This isn't something new. We're not talking, so I'm not telling you or anybody else here on the council that it's, that, you know, we're not aware of it. But I'm just wondering if, as we're talking about building a new high school now, potentially looking at a central middle school and all this stuff, is this, and, you know, again, like this isn't for you, maybe it's more for the city council, but, you know, we have to start thinking about pedestrian safety and how we're going to get these kids from one side of the road to the other. I mean, it was, when I tell you unsafe, what I saw, and I've been seeing it before, but it just resonated so much this last time, maybe it's the time I happen to be going through Bell Circle. You know, you've got a lot of children and a lot of crazy motorists, we've got more cars than ever on the road right now. You know, the number one cause of accidents today, as we all know, is distracted driving. People are texting, they're not paying attention. I think we really need to start to think about what we're going to do to protect these kids once they leave the school, because we're building on major roadways, let's face it. It's not like, I mean, Park Ave is busy, New Hall Street and Sargent Street are busy, but it's not American Legion Highway and it's not, it's not, you know, 1A. It's, you know, it's, we're talking, you know, so that's something I think that we really need to think about. And, you know, that's really all that I have, you know, the forecasting out, the capacity for the new schools, where is it going to be, you know, I mean, ideally, I mean, you know, that revenue that we would lose down at Wonderland is significant when you factor that out over many, many years. I mean, I don't know the life of this project, Mr. Dagan, would you say this is a 40- or 50-year project? I mean, is this, what's the lifespan of the project?
From, and this certainly isn't my decision, but I believe 30-year borrowing is probably, from a financial perspective, it's about 30 years, but consider that 30 to 35, because the borrowing would need to happen for a few years. So we mostly try to put it in the context of 30 years.
30 years before having to build a new high school?
Oh, no, sorry, so you mean-
Yeah, I'm talking about the utility.
Lifespan of the existing building, that might be something that you want to chat a little bit more about.
Sure. The MSBA requires 50-plus years. So we like to think of it toward 100, yeah.
Yeah, so we're looking at 50 years utility, you know, that's 50 years of revenue that we have to think about as well. So that's definitely, you know, something that I know we all have to think about. Mr. President, thank you very much for the latitude, appreciate it.
Counselor Rotendo.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President, to Superintendent Kelly, I have a few questions, if you could answer them, I appreciate that. They're all pretty much circling around the issue of population growth, and as we were just told, it's a 50-year project, and as former mayor and Councilor Rizzo can attest to, we were both involved in school building projects in which, when they came online, they were basically full to capacity. And at that time, your father, Mr. Dagan, had readily- And at that time, your father, Mr. Dakin, had readily stated to me that we were having 250 children per year increase in its growth. So the question I have is, what is our current growth projections for both elementary, middle school, and high school projections for the next two years? As a guess, likewise, considering Revere is now increased by 20%, how are we going to offset the growth that's coming with development within the city, in particular, because we are looking at the most impoverished census tracts in Revere that are producing the largest population growth?
Yeah, so it's a little bit complicated right now, especially because our enrollments are actually down this year and last year, but that's because of COVID. We, and we have seen in the last two months, our enrollment is starting to come back up again. We anticipate by next year that we'll be back on track. When the MSBA set our enrollment number at the 2,450 for the new high school, they used their actuarial models to project that, but I don't think they're that far off. And one of the options that the city would have is to build a high school, a larger high school, that would house more kids, but any increase over that enrollment of 2,450 would be entirely out of the city's pocketbook. There would be no reimbursement for that. And I don't even know, Brian, maybe you know, or Bob, maybe you know. I'm not even sure the MSBA will let us do that. That might actually knock us out of their program.
So I guess the other question is, what is our growth rate for middle school from the elementary?
Yeah, and that's, we don't have a growth rate, like, our numbers are pretty steady, K through 12. We see the, the same numbers of kids that are coming up with us. But the point that Counsel Rizzo made, that all of our schools are overcrowded, is correct. And he knows that we've been talking about this for years and years now, and that's why the vision was always to have the existing high school become a central middle.
Right.
So that middle schools could become elementary schools, and that would alleviate the overcrowding across the system, K-12.
That's what we've spoken about with Paul Dakin when we were sitting in the back room, I forget, over at the high school.
Yeah.
Almost eight years ago.
Yep. And so that's going to be a challenge that the city is going to have to figure out. If we do build on Aracola Park, that's no longer an option because of the chapter 97.
97, right.
We have to replace those parks if we build on them.
All right.
So that means that we don't have the existing building to relieve overcrowding in the elementary and middle schools, which means immediately we are out looking for another piece of land, which we know from this experience doesn't exist.
Right.
To build another school. So it's definitely something to think about, and I know the money is a huge factor in terms of income for the city, but, and, and the traffic, like, everything you guys have said is 100% on point. And one thing that we talked a little bit about at a school building committee meeting, which speaks to Mr. Novoselvsky's point, is if, if we have the field separated from the main building, then to Mr. Rizzo's point, we have to worry about the kids getting back and forth. If, maybe what, what we want to think about is, could we develop that front end of Aracola Park and move the park into where the parking lot is? Because if that's going to be a middle school, the kids aren't driving. We don't need as many parking spots.
Well, with that said, through you, Mr. Dakin, what would be the cost of the middle school, if we were to build one within the next five years?
I, I actually think-
Considering inflation.
I, I think, first off, the timing, if, if it's going to go through the Mass School Building Authority, they only let you do one project at a time. So it would have to be after the high school's completed, closed out.
Right, that's why I said within five years.
Yep, and, and I think you'd pretty much be looking at similar values. You don't need as much specialty program space in middle schools.
About 175 million?
Yeah, I think easily, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and what Dr. Kelly mentioned is something we spoke with, with the city, is in the event that the project does go down to, towards Wonderland, the fields and parking associated with the middle, the demands for that are less. So the, the idea might be that if that school is rebuilt, renovated, knocked down, built up again, it can occupy a smaller footprint, and that existing site might be able to yield some tax revenues via some development.
So for me, one of the issues is clearly having a daughter who graduated from the high school recently, knowing all the issues regarding traffic, traffic patterns, and knowing about the issues of children going down to the Shirley Ave area and so forth. One of the things that I think we can bring to bear, having legislators and so forth, and now Catherine Clark, Congresswoman who lives in our city, is actually connecting Broadway to the beach using the path. I mean, if you look to other communities, Newton, I can go through the Brookline, et cetera, where they actually have overpasses where people can actually walk. And I've actually went online and, and skilled it up myself. I mean, between $4 and $5 million, you go to the state and you ask for it. I mean, that, that just is a known braid, especially when you're going across from Wonderland into Wonderland Train Station, as well as going over the, the Amazon area over to Rumney Marsh School. I mean, you can do all those things, and I hate to say it, pejoratively speaking, most kids don't ride their bikes to school. I mean, that's a known thing. Most of the kids from western part of Revere tend to take a car, as my kids did, and few of them that live in that area walk there. The other ones walk from basically Beachmont and, you know, the Shirley Ave area, and that's where we end up seeing them on the highway. I guess, for me, the issue is, you know, we're talking about development, but the real reality is, is the majority of development in the city of Revere for the past couple of years, up until we got Suffolk Downs, has been residential. So the economics of it changed in particular, and more importantly, as that area gets developed, I can see more residential being put there than anything else. Not only that, you're going to encumber greater issues with pier pilings and so forth over at the, the clay pit over at the high school, and then what is the cost to move that culvert? Because now you're changing the whole dynamics of every single feet or so, you know, that's going in there from the hills, from your, from your dad's property, in, in fact. So I guess, what does that cost? Because that's at least $10 million right there, and, and not only that, you're going from elevation of 10 feet, and you have to eject up to 23 feet to get over the ridge. I mean, that's what the topographic maps say. So that's a very big pump, and that's a very big cost. And if that pump stops, those people get flooded.
Yep.
It's not been seven minutes yet, sorry.
You can respond. Really quick, Counsel Rotundo, thank you. And, and right now, we're, if I'm not mistaken, we're carrying about $12 million in the budget to resolve that culvert, and a big chunk of that would be underground pump station. And when, when I say underground pump station, I, I mean a building underground.
Right.
So it's not, not a piece of equipment down a manhole.
Oh, no, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I mean, building, so-
The Yaromay had the same thing.
Yeah, hu, big expense, it's a huge pipe, it drains a huge portion of the city. It is a significant piece of baggage for that site. And if one were to, a future potential middle school project, theoretically, the footprint of the building location wouldn't change that much. So I think a future redevelopment of that culvert in the context of a middle school is less money than we're looking at. We need to both move it, add some angles, add some length to get it around the building, which makes it even more of a premium. If it were just a straight shot replacement, might be on the lesser side of $10 million, but you're still right in that neighborhood.
And as far as the high school itself, how, what is the height and, and so forth? And can you amateurize upwards in order to save on land cost?
We, we have looked at that. The building committee initially, we were asking questions, could we go five stories? Could we go six? And I think, I'll, I'll let Bob answer a little bit the, how it limits the program in, in the building. But we, typically, if you're outside of Boston, in, in the surrounding, immediately surrounding a little more densely populated areas, you don't get a lot of the postage stamp bigger buildings and high schools that have to go up four and five, six stories. But as I'll let Bob note, one of the challenges becomes just co-locating a lot of the spaces that you want to see in that lobby and, and that first floor. If you start stacking it up, those connections become trickier. So we did look at that with the building committee, and they felt four stories was the sweet spot.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Rotundo. Counsel Serena.
Can I have my answer? Oh, go ahead.
So the, the plans right now have a 14-foot floor-to-floor, so we're talking just shy of 70 feet overall, and that, that's including the parking level.
All right.
A lot of that's going to be a moving target, because as we work on the grade, the measure of height comes from the average grade around the building. We'll be raising the building, but also raising some grade along with it.
And my understanding is, you've built over, you've actually done the Dunbar Center and other places, and their elevation is around four or five stories, correct?
What locations?
Yeah, Perkins Eastman built the, the Dunbar Senior High School at the U.S. Capitol, and I'm just referring to the size, that's all.
Yeah, if we, if we went much over four, we'd get into high-rise territory, and it's just so you can kiss 650 bucks a square foot goodbye if you're talking of high-rise, that cost is going to go up as well, so.
Counsel Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Brian and Bob, for this informative presentation. The disadvantage of being second to last is, most of my colleagues have asked the questions that I had in mind. And one point I wanted to drive home, that Counsel Rizzo had brought up, was the, and actually Superintendent Dakin alluded to as well, I mean, wow, I'm looking at you, and I'm sorry, Superintendent Kelly, had brought up was, with regard to connecting, you know, like a pedestrian overpass or whatnot. And if we're, you know, as we're moving forward in the process, I think what's another, you know, one more thing to add into it that I think if, you know, if, no matter which site we choose, I think we should consider adding a pedestrian overpass on American Legion Highway and perhaps on the other side as well. But that was pretty much my point that I was going to bring up, because right now, kids are literally walking from both the Rumney Marsh Academy and the high school on the sidewalk in this time of year when there's snow. Sometimes they're walking literally on the street on American Legion Highway, and we really, we need to address that moving forward, and I think this is the perfect opportunity too. So I will, I'll probably have more questions at our committee of the whole meeting, but that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And gentlemen, thank you for the presentation tonight. It was very informative. My question would be, if the Wonderland site was, say the Wonderland site was chosen, and a potential buyer came in for that property as well, at what point do, do they get that nixed and they can't sell to a private entity? Or does that put more mud in the water, you know, for, for that situation?
So this is actually something we've talked about a lot, and, and some of the input we've gotten from appraisers is really that, in terms of eminent domain, since it is based on multiple appraisals and what a land court thinks, any single buyer coming in and offering something really high or really low shouldn't really be incorporated into the land value as far as an appraisal goes. And that's some input that we got when we were questioning the 30 million total site value of, well, what if, you know, X or Y private company who has really deep pockets comes along and makes a move for it for a significantly higher value? We don't think that that would ripple into the appraisals going significantly higher. We don't think that it would necessarily change what ultimately might be a land court's opinion on the matter. And lastly, I would, I would say that, you know, eminent domain, as, as you folks all know, is, is pretty powerful. Even if there's a new owner there, it still would work. I think the key is to know if we're going in that direction, to sort of plant a flag in the sand as soon as possible with those owners, to say it's coming, the paperwork's coming. How do we make the best of it? And we sort of interrupt that potential for someone else to come in and do eminent domain with this party that we know as opposed to a new party who potentially just paid a lot of money for the site.
Now, also, again, with the Wonderland site, as Counsel Rizzo stated, the amount of children that walk in that Bell Circle area now coming to the current high school would almost, I would think, double or triple going the opposite way if, if that was the case. And, you know, is, is that something that has been looked into? And lastly, is it completely out of question to maybe think about making the, the school, wherever it's placed, a little bit larger? Can it be done and move an eighth grade into the high school with the potential high school, or is that just something that?
So I'm glad you asked those two questions, because I think it allows me to clarify two points that sound like they're very important here. One is the short answer on adding a grade or increasing the square footage or, or enrollment. The short answer is no. And that's really because the, the state approved this as a high school project, they approved it as a 9 to 12, they approved it at 2,450 students, they feel like all the concessions have been given, period, end of story. For, that's sort of what we have to deal with right now. So we couldn't fundamentally change the size of this building. The best thing we can do is leave the city in a position that you have your best foot forward going forward with the middle school, et cetera. The other point I'll make relates to some of the points that Counsel Serena and Rotundo brought up, and it's really one of the other MSBA sort of rules of engagement here is, we, the high school project, can't take on associated infrastructure upgrades. There's a line to which, if we need to put up a light coming in out of a site, we can do that. They won't reimburse for it, but they'll let us. A pedestrian bridge, they would cut out. It would, it could definitely be done. It would just have to be done as a separate project. City would have to push it. They wouldn't allow it to be part of the high school. So that connection, that east-west connection we're talking about, we all view as fundamentally huge, really for either site. If, if, if you're talking about activating the city and folks being able to get down to the beach and walk there, it works either way. But certainly, if there's a school down at Wonderland, that becomes very important. We just, we view it as something that we would try to help come along with a commuter rail stop. That commuter rail stop would provide passage over the track, and perhaps that study can extend that a little bit west through the Amazon property, whether you're on the surface on the paper street or elevated.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to just go over to my right here, and I must have skipped Counsel Cogliandro, so I don't want to skip anybody. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, thank you so much for the presentation. We also had some great questions by the council tonight. My, my question is in regards to site selection. Building Committee, School Committee, City Council, what happens if we're not all on the same page, and could that lead to MSBA not funding the project?
So I'll take the first piece. If, if all the committees in the coming weeks aren't on the same page, what it's basically going to mean is the, the building committee is going to make a recommendation. If either the school committee or city council disagrees with that recommendation, we, the project team, will be going back to the, the building committee and saying, you really should reconsider this. We, we can't go through a schematic design, spend the money it would take to do a schematic design, do the surveys, prep for Article 97, and then have the project fail in the fall. The reason we're doing this now is that we know we need to be in alignment after schematic design. There's, there's no option then to move to a different site. So if it takes a little more time from the building committee now to maybe go to a, a second option, if we're not in alignment, we'll do that now, knowing that that'll put us in a position after schematic design that basically everyone's on the same page. So we can buy a little more time now. We couldn't buy more time next fall after we've designed one project. So what we're really trying to do is build the consensus right now. The dates that I put in front of you earlier might evolve a little bit in February. If we all come out with the unanimous decision in the next week or two before the, your meeting on the 24th, we know what to do, we know what to get to the state. If we don't, we'll be calling a few building committee meetings to, to go to, potentially go to option two, and coming back to you folks.
Thank you very much.
Well, I want to first say thank you to both of you, as well as the building committee, for all the work that has been put in up to this point. Being part of that committee, we've had several, a numerous amount of meetings, so I can't thank everybody enough for the effort that has been put in so far, and I know there's going to be a lot more work ahead, obviously. Unfortunately, being in inner city, we don't have the luxury of having an additional 25, 30 acres available. So land and where we were going to build this was always the biggest issue. So I, I don't have any major questions, because I believe going through this committee and being on the committee have, we, we've gone through it, but I can't stress enough the importance of all three committees being aligned and agreeing to a site, okay? The fact of not having, we've, we've been on this path of trying to get on the list for, let's say, five, I would have to say at least five years. Now that we're on it, and I know it's a, a big dollar to, to, to spend, but I can't stress the importance for the city to make this happen and we be all in line in order to get this done, because not having, it's not an option, to be honest with you. It's not good for the city, it's not good for our students, and we need that for our city. So I can't stress that enough. I think we should put our heads together and work together and come to a good conclusion that's best for the kids of this city. Thank you. What I'm going to do is open it up to some of the public, if they have any- I'm going to do is open it up to some of the public, if they have any questions or responses.
Rockwell Falls, only 55, just kind of left. I think closely about 35 to 40 years ago, to answer Counselor Rotundo's question, George Calala, may he rest in peace, great spokesman for the city of Rivera. There was an, a question about putting a footbridge for the high school going for a bell circle to go across the other side of the highway. It collapsed. Never went forward. And that was the question that a lot of people were asked back then. So history's going to repeat itself. Counselor Rotundo, Counselor Rizzo said the right thing. When stuff like this happens 40 years ago, and it's 40 years later, and you're talking about the same issue. Why? If it was done 40 years ago, it just wouldn't be an issue as far as today goes. It'd be, oh, you said, edged in stone. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Counselors. Don Charamella, Chief of Infrastructure for the city of Rivera, 215 Rice Ave, Rivera. Regardless of whatever, whatever site you did choose upon, two pump stations are going to be required at both sites. So during the Building Committee review, I explained that the 72-inch CMP pipe that runs through the existing site is pitched backwards, has a two-foot differential. So basically, when you're inside the pipe and you're downstream of the pipe, you look back toward Broadway, that's where the water is, and you're basically high and dry. So when the pipe was installed, it was installed, basically, it wasn't backwards. They worked with the grades that they could. They planted a pipe, and basically, the force of the water tries to just make its way out. But before that happens, Broadway, East Mountain Ave, or Mountain Ave kind of floods, it surcharges, and so that's why that pipe is chock full of water and the water can't get out. So a pump station will be required on that site. But also downstream of that, which is the Central County ditch, where, where it outfalls at the Martin Street tide gate, that's a gravity gate. So during a high tide, the water can't get out. And that's the ditch that runs along the commuter rail. So that, right now, is overgrown with fragmity. It needs to be cleaned. But you'll recreate flooding problem. If you're forcing the water out on the existing high school site, you're only forcing it just downstream. But during a high tide, which now we know we have, you know, we have so many, and the astronomical high tides seem to be more frequent, that water will not be able to get out on gravity. So they need a pump station at the, at the Martin Street, Martin Street tide gate, which from my understanding would not be funded by, funded by the, the MSBA. If you use the Wonderland site, that ditch also is surcharged pretty much all the time. The Eastern County ditch, right after North Shore Road, in the, in the Wonderland parking lot, that has all been cleaned and remediated all the way out to ju- just about Route 1. That works great on gravity, but during a rain event, you would need a pump in the Oak Island tide gate. There is a spare chamber. We do have a plan to put a pump in that, the pump sta- the, the, the head wall was designed for a pump. No one was never put in. We have plans to put a pump in there. So that would essentially be a pump station. But you'd also need a pump station on the Wonderland site, because that ditch just, it, it surcharges and, and water can't get out based on gravity. And it certainly doesn't get out, get out on a high tide. So, and that's basically the, 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 that's the theme of being in a coastal town, when every 12 hours when it's high tide, our water is not leaving without the assistance of a pump. Thank you.
Mr. President, point of inquiry, I suppose. May I ask a question to the Chief of Infrastructure?
Sure.
Through you, Mr. President. I don't mean to spot you, Don, so if you don't feel comfortable answering, that's fine. But as the Chief of Infrastructure and hearing, you know, hearing the potential water displacement issues and whatnot, out of the three, or out of the, the two sites between the Aracola Park and Wonderland, which one do you see as less problematic of the two? From, from, purely from an infrastructure-water standpoint? Wonderland?
He's putting you on the spot.
I don't mean to, and, and if, if, if you're not, if you're not comfortable answering that, that's, that's fine. I, you know.
I think, I think as far as the infrastructure is concerned, I think the Wonderland site is more of a blank canvas. I think there's a little bit more flexibility. What I don't like about the existing site, it was a, a brick, basically, it was a brick manufacturing facility where they actually quarried the clay from the existing site. So essentially, they lowered the site. That site is not a depression naturally. That site was basically, was, was, was quarried. It was man-made. It was kind of hogged out, you know, by man. And it created like a little bit of a swale. You know, it's funny, if you look back on the, on the maps, going back to the 16, 1700s, there wasn't much land in Rivera. It's all pretty much filled in. Somehow it evolved. It's a way, it's, it's very odd. As far as the conditions at the existing site, the clay is not a problem. You'd always, you know, piles would always go down to, you know, to bedrock, no matter what you build. I'm sure that the foundation, you know, the structural engineers would, 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 would design the foundations suitable for whatever load you're going to, you know, put on it. But as far as the, but there's nothing better than I would like to take and get that 72-inch corrugated metal pipe out of the existing site, because it neanders and it goes uphill. And it's so disheartening to see that somebody went through the pains of installing a pipe without putting the proper pitch downstream. It's, and it's, it's just incredible. I mean, we go in it, and it, it's like you're in a funhouse. Like you're high and dry downstream where the water's supposed to be, and you look upstream toward Broadway, and the water just gets deeper and deeper and deeper. And in fact, what that connects to is an old granite box culvert that goes on the Broad, Broadway. So basically, what it was, you know, back in the 16, 1700s, when it was a stagecoach route, it must have been a wooden bridge there at some point in time. And somebody said, well, let's cover it with granite or granite roof. And that's what it is today. It still exists the way it did, you know, three, 500, 300 years ago. It's still there, the same way. And then they connected the 72-inch CMP pipe in the, in the new, in the existing high school site. But then the grades just didn't work, but they just kept on going, laying the pipe and say, we got to put this pipe in here regardless. We know the grades don't work, but we have to reach to where it goes, which is to the American Legion Highway. And, you know, it, there's more water there that, that it, it just doesn't get out. It just doesn't, doesn't work. So you'll need a station there on this existing site, and you would need a sta- station to where it, to pump it out in Martin Street.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
If there are no further questions, I'm going to refer this to the committee, the whole, on January 24th at 5:00 PM for further discussion. Thank you.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the 2022 update to the municipal hazard mitigation plan.
Mr. President, may I speak? Elle Baker couldn't be here tonight because she has concerning family problems. She was going to speak on this, so if we can just put this on file and, I mean, we, she's been working on it for the last four years, so.
Mr. President?
So can we vote on it?
We're going to put this in Public Safety Committee and bring that up at a later date.
Calendar item number six, unfinished business, introduction of the City Council Rules of Order for adoption.
Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to offer a couple of amendments. I'd like to call your attention to Rule 28 on page 12. Second paragraph states, "The members of the council shall restrict their remarks on motions which they introduce to not more than three motions. The three motions shall include those motions submitted as late or late-laid motions." At this time, I would move to delete that paragraph, reason being, I do not think the public sends us here with the expectation of limitations on our ability to debate, limitations on the ability to advocate and to convince our colleagues as to the pros, the cons, and the necessities of the issue. So that being said, I would ask this paragraph be deleted.
Can you, what rule again?
It's on page 12, Mr. President. It's Rule 28, Paragraph 2. Call the question, Mr. President.
Roll call?
Roll, unless anybody wants to debate.
Give me a moment on this.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
So we're going to table that, point of parliamentary procedure. Roll call was called. Tabling is therefore denied underneath parliamentary procedure. Okay. Okay. We haven't adopted them yet. I'm going to table this until. Point of order. I'm, I'm going to table this, Counselor. Point of order. We haven't accepted the rules, therefore the rules are not accepted. Okay. And therefore, demers rules take precedent.
I would ask for a roll call on the motion, Mr. President, with all due respect.
Okay.
Mr. President, I offer a substitute motion to hold this until the next City Council meeting.
Point of order. Roll call was called.
Substitution is point of order, substitution subsized.
Okay. Let's, 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 I'm going to control this by pushing this off to the next meeting, and we can have that discussion then. And that's what we're going to do.
One further, one further amendment.
Go ahead.
Along the same lines, Mr. President, I call your attention to page 12, Rule 30. Any motion make, well, I'll just call to the final sentence on the Rule 30. Members of the City Council shall introduce no more than five motions at any meeting of the City Council. The five motion limitation shall include those motions submitted as late motions. I would ask that that sentence be deleted of the Rules of Order, Mr. President, for the same reasons I don't think that the people send us here with the expectations of our limited abilities to put forth their concerns. If you want to table to the next meeting, I have no objection at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to table that as well. Thank you. Okay. Let me address the, the rest of the council. Does anybody else have any questions with the Rules of Order? Great.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Stephen Vetterman to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees.
Appointments.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Leila Petri to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to a request for special municipal employee status for Rivera High School junior varsity basketball and junior varsity softball coaches. Shall the City Council grant special municipal employee status to the positions of junior varsity basketball coach and junior varsity softball coach? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, special municipal employee status has been granted. Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Nicholas Rudolph to the Conservation Commission.
I'll refer this to appointments.
Next up is motions. Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Keith that the mayor requests the parking department to enforce the provisions of Schedule 8 of Title 10, parking restrictions generally, and reinstitute permit parking for the City Hall parking lot. There is inadequate parking for employees due to residents and businesses utilizing the lot for off-street parking, in addition to several parking spaces recently designated as electrical vehicles only.
Counselor Keith?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this is really something that's already on the books. It's just, it doesn't, it's not currently being enforced. And this wouldn't not allow visitors to, to utilize a lot. There'd be a, I believe, a 30-minute or off-the-electric vehicles as a two-hour designation for those. It's just, you know, the employees in, in City Hall are not even able to park in the lot during business hours. So obviously, off-hours is a different story. But I think that there's some people that are taking advantage of the lot right now. Thank you.
All, any questions? All in favor, all opposed? So what?
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselors Visconti and McKenna that the mayor requests the city planner and the city solicitor to draft a zoning ordinance amendment providing for a revised definition of condominiums and new use regulations for condominiums. This motion is intended to specifically define condominiums as a separate use from apartments.
Thank you. If I may, currently, our ordinance doesn't differentiate between apartments and condos. And bringing forth this motion was to make sure that future developers that come into our city don't come in front of the council and market their projects as condos and, and then flip them to apartments, which is a concern. You know, it's one thing that a developer would come in and get the permitting needed as apartments, but then to flip that after marketing it as a condo, I have a major problem with. So that's the reason for this motion. And I am going to refer to Ms. McKenna, Counselor McKenna first, if you don't mind holding off.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I had an incident about a year and a half ago where a businessman brought, bought a three apartment comp, a three-floor apartment complex in Ward 1 and wanted to turn them into six condos. As a request from the Concerned Buddies, I had three community meetings. After some fine tuning, the neighbors and I agreed on the development. The businessman came in front of the council, and the council approved his building design and the condos. Not only did he not stick with the original plan of the design of the building that was presented to the council, which we approved, the businessman sold the building not too long afterwards, and the new owner turned the condos into apartments. Now, in this three-floor apartment building, there are six apartments, not condos. Not only is it bad for the neighborhood, because now the street is inundated with cars, there is no repercussions going forward. This is taking place throughout the whole city and has to be stopped. A new ordinance has to be written to protect our neighbors. Thank you.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And first off, if I could just take 30 seconds, I, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I want to congratulate you on, on your presidency.
Thank you.
I'd also like to congratulate Counselor Serena, a very capable vice president, and want to wish you guys the best, looking forward to working together. Also, thank you for, for my committee assignments. I appreciate that as well. I, I wish we only had to worry about a six-unit apartment building, as Counselor McKenna just alluded to. We've got, as we all know, we've got plenty of apartments throughout the city. And separating this, to me, makes perfect sense. I mean, it's much more. I mean, it's much more palatable, and always has been much more palatable to me, to entertain a condo project as opposed to an apartment complex, for obvious reasons. You've got ownership issues, you've got, they become, you know, invested in the community with respect to not so, you know, the transient nature of apartments versus condominiums. I mean, it just makes perfect sense, as far as I'm concerned. And so, I wholeheartedly support the motion. In fact, I'd like to see when, if this is drawn up, presumably by the city solicitor, whoever's going to draw up these, you know, this ordinance change, I'd like to see it as detailed as we can, or unless we take it case by case, where we start getting into the condo documents, so they can't become condos and then flipped over to rental units. We have to really take control over this, you know, for the future of our community. And I think, I think you, Mr. President, and Councilor McKenna, put forward an excellent motion, I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you. Councilor Rotundo.
I think there might be a legal issue here, and I would definitely want Solicitor Capizzi to look at this. It's my understanding, and perhaps I could be incorrect, but 250 Broadway, I believe, started out as apartments and subsequently flipped to condos. And if you take a look at, I think, what's it, the Assessors' Office, you'll be able to see. So, I think "use" is a very specific legal term, and I think we need to really ensure that we have the ability to do this. So, speaking of Paul Capizzi, I support the effort, but I think there might be some legal hurdles here.
And I completely agree, and Solicitor Capizzi's already been informed and involved, as well as Frank Stringi, on this. So, they are working on that as well. Further questions?
I wholeheartedly support any measure that would strengthen the zoning ordinance in the city. We've allowed far too many apartments to be built over the past several years, burdening our neighborhoods and creating traffic problems. So, I want to commend the maker of the motion, and I support it.
Thank you. Any further? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor requests the Department of Municipal Inspections to not issue trash violations during the Christmas holiday week. Residents have much more recycling and garbage from the holiday and are being penalized due to the overflow.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand the meaning of sanitary, especially when it comes to barrels and the rodent problems that we've had over the years. But during Christmas holiday week, I just think that we should just give the residents just a present and not ticket them because their garbage can is over five inches. I had a senior citizen call me about this, and he said his garbage, he only has one barrel, and he was putting the extra stuff that he had, the overflow, in this barrel, and he got a $25 ticket. So, I'm just asking the city to overlook during Christmas holiday and New Year's holiday for the overflow. I'm not saying couches should be put out there and chairs or tables, I'm just saying, you know, cardboard and maybe some garbage. Thank you.
Councilor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Usually, I'm the first one to defend the ordinances that are on the books and keeping in enforcement, but Councilor McKenna brings up a great point with this motion. And anecdotally, I had a resident on Derby Road who called me over the weekend, and this, of course, was an overflow week, and he placed out a trash bag filled with wrapping paper. It was nothing, you know, it was innocuous, it was literally just a trash bag of wrapping paper from Christmas, and he got a fine, and he wasn't understanding, he didn't understand that overflow meant not literal overflow, but that you, you know, you still had to put the trash in a barrel. And, you know, so I think as long as people aren't putting out, you know, leftover Spinelli's in their trash and leaving that out, but the week of Christmas, there should be that grace period because there is additional. That's true, not many people have leftover Spinelli's after Christmas, but I do think we should grant reprieve for that, that specific week because it is a major overflow. Like I said, the ward counselors, we get these calls, and it is an issue, and we should deal with it. So, I support this motion wholeheartedly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Rizzo.
Just very briefly, Mr. President, I, you know, just to follow up on Councilor Sorino's comments, and obviously, Councilor McKenna's motion, I just think some discretion. I mean, we understand, we used to have a major, serious rodent problem here in the city, and we went through a lot of different measures, whether it was the mint bags, and then over to the, you know, city-issued barrels and all this stuff. But, you know, these are our own residents, and I mean, if, you know, we, I think we can, you know, implement a little common sense. I mean, if somebody comes out, you know, and they're running out with a last bag, and the trash is coming today, and it's popped open a few inches, come on. I mean, let's give our own residents a break. You know, that's, that's just how I feel. I don't think we need to be nailing our own residents. If you've got somebody blatantly putting trash out on the street, well, of course, that's one thing. But if you're going to be, if you're going to be, if you're going to be going and you're going to be nailing people every time their barrel's a few inches up, that's, I find that, I find that pretty, you know, pretty wrong. You know, these are our own people, I think we should be looking out for them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great motion. I would actually be in favor of applying this no-ticketing rule to every bulk pickup week, every time we have an overflow week. Why not give a warning to these people if they're doing something that's unsanitary? As Councilor Rizzo said, we need to help a lot of the residents. I know personally, people have moved out of the city because this was the icing on the cake for them, this was the straw that broke the camel's back. So, we have to find a better way to help people get rid of their waste as well, and I think overflow weeks, we could, we could stand to not ticket them. Thank you.
Council Fiori.
Mr. President, one of the single most issues I heard during the course of this campaign last year was people were very concerned about balancing the budget on the backs of the taxpayers with $25 fines at a time. Now, I understand the reasoning behind doing it, but I don't think that rats understand the difference between a warning and a fine. And I would suggest that we, well, I will, and I intend to be pulling the ordinances and ask that, amending the ordinances, to issue warnings. So, having said that, I, it's really been a problem for the residents of the city, it creates a lot of frustration, I don't think it's right, and I think we need to look out for our own, and I don't think it's going to affect the problem because, again, I don't think rodents know the difference between a warning and a fine.
Thank you. Councilor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I fully agree with the motion, you know, I too, I have a lot of people at my house on Christmas Eve, like a lot of families in Revere, so I generate extra trash, and I truly appreciate the additional overflow weeks. I use them. And there's times that I think all of us probably have a barrel that might be a little bit bulging over, and we try and do our best to jam on top of it. What I do want to say, though, is, you know, we, we did, there was a full year of, almost a full year of basically amnesty on this program before they really started truly enforcing it. Violations were overturned, there was a number of warnings. I'm talking, it had to have been a full year after the barrels were distributed, before they really started fining people, except for really egregious fines. I like, I appreciate Councilor Rizzo's comments on discretion, and I think that that's, that's one. It's, it's not always black and white, though. So, if we start giving the direction to the code enforcement that, you know, start not missing, you know, interpreting it certain ways, everyone's going to interpret it their own way, one side of the city's going to be interpreted differently than the other, depending on the person, and then, again, we're talking about enforcement and zoning, and then we're saying, no, don't, ignore it. We had a serious rat problem, we had a serious rodent problem in our city. It's not gone, it has not gone away, but it's definitely subsided. We've done a really nice job. I don't think that we're, you know, building the budget on the backs of $25 tickets. I think that, I mean, I hate to say that's political fodder, I hope we're not going to be dealing with that all year, but we had, we had, we had, I'm talking right now.
Personal privilege.
Hold on a second.
We had an ordinance, we had an ordinance, and we're enforcing, we're enforcing the ordinance, and that's it.
Mister President, a point of personal privilege.
State your point, Council Fiori.
I take exception to a counselor calling my motives into question, and I'm very disappointed in Councilor Keefe, and I hope we can end this here. You're better than that. You're better than that.
Thank you, I am.
Next, you're right. Here we go. Council Silvestri.
Thank you, Counselor, and I think the motion is a great motion. I do agree with Council Rizzo, and I think giving the inspectors a little bit of leeway into this side. I've talked to a few residents who, one gentleman put out a mini-fridge, empty, by time the trash came and got it, he ended up with a ticket from the mini-fridge, but by the time the trashmen came, it was picked up by the scrap metal guys. And I do, I do think that giving them discretion is the answer, but I don't, I don't agree that we are balancing budgets on $25 tickets.
Thank you. Council Rotundo.
Thank you. I would like to point out a couple of things. One, I think, in fact, what is important is that it shouldn't just be solely for Christmas, there are other people that have other religious beliefs, and that we should do it on religious holidays as a whole. What I would say is, I can understand, frankly, Council Fiori's frustration, I've heard it too. I don't believe his, his issue was motivated on politics. I think that, you know, that type of discourse is not necessary, as I'm looking at the treasurer's note, one could, you know, take a look at the fines and say that, you know, they're a little heavy in some areas in some months, but that would be specific to what's going on. I don't believe that there is a political motive for Inspector of Inspection Services, or Director of Inspection Services, to make it his life's hobby to ticket people unmercifully. So, I guess my goal here is that perhaps maybe, you know, we can set up a system where a warning is set first, the first time, the second time, and the third time, they get fined.
And I believe that has been done, you know, in the past, like Councilor Keefe said, the program was set up with some leeway to the residents for quite some time. So, I guess the concern here is whether or not some, not saying all, would take advantage of it, but I do agree that some common sense and some discretion should be applied as well. Councilor Moravito.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think we're all better than this, right? So, and I think we all know our residents. And me firsthand, I know on the holiday weeks, my trash was packed, my city bin, I had an overflow trash barrel, and then I had to go to the other side of Revere and put trash in my dad's barrel. So, it's common sense, we're not asking for much that they're asking for during the holidays. It's, it's common sense, we shouldn't be going back and forth. It's, it's a no-brainer, you have people over during the holidays, there's going to be excess trash, people need some leeway. We're asking for two holidays out of the year, it's a no-brainer. I'm for the motion, let's do this, let's vote for it.
All in favor? Oh.
Council President, I'm Joe Lake, I'm the Department of Public Works, General Foreman. This has been an ongoing issue, I'm certainly in support of giving some leniency on the holidays to this, but I deal with the trash, a lot of the trash, and trash has become a major issue, and for years, we heard that the rodent issue was due to not having barrels. There was, they were ripping the bags open, and like Councilor Rizzo said, the mint bags were an issue, we tried, it didn't work. We wanted to spend a lot of city funds and the residents' funds, taxpayers, on getting this problem resolved. We got it resolved with a barrel program, a very, a very energetic barrel program that cost the city a lot of money. And I agree with Councilor Keefe, I mean, I also believe it's part of the politics on Councilor Fiori's part, and I'll say that, I'll...
Move the question. He's on of all, Mr. President.
The bottom line, the bottom line, the bottom line is, Councilor Keefe is correct. There was an issue, it was a serious and a major problem in the city, we've corrected it. To give leniency on holidays, I think no one is against that, and I think that was a great motion, but let's, let's really, to a lot of, like Councilor Moravito said, let's stop the nonsense, and let's really, because our job's hot enough.
Mr. President.
Our job's hot enough, thank you very much.
Okay, enough discussion on this, and I'm going to say that, you know, as a parent of four kids, Christmas is crazy in my house, so I, as a resident, could use the leniency, okay, of the, of this fine. So, I want to commend Ms., Council McKenna on this motion, and we're going to do, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Thank you. Okay.
Council President Visconti.
Yes.
Listen, you got two gentlemen here, Don Chalamello and Joe Lake, a team effort, they worked together to solve the problems in the city of Revere. Councils at large, you should all team up and do the right thing for the people of Revere. The reason why I'm saying this here is because, if I'm not mistaken, Councilor McKenna, going back maybe six months ago, a year ago, trash, 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 parking, parking, parking. What I don't understand, Shirley Ave, Revere Beach, anything that goes in Revere goes through this, to the council.
Okay, I'm sorry.
How did all this name, did all this building get up there, would you guys voted in or you voted out? I'm ignorant to the fact of what's, what's what, how did all the buildings start?
Thank you, thank you for your comments. I understand, I think we've had multiple discussions on this, I think we should move on to the next, we're all in agreement that we should be working together, and we agree on this motion, so...
Just one more point, infrastructure in the city of Revere.
This, this has nothing to do with this motion, so I'm going to, I'm going to refrain from those comments, and we're going to move on to the next motion. Thank you.
Mr. President, through you, to Madam Clerk, I'd like to recuse myself from this next motion.
Okay. Council Silvestri is recused.
Yep. Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor requests the Department of Municipal Inspections to request retail and grocery stores to provide a dedicated parking space located near the entrance for veterans as a way to honor and respect their service to our country. It is noted, Council Silvestri is recused from discussion and participation on this matter.
Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Council McKenna.
Oh, what did you say?
Go ahead. No, no. Council McKenna, my apologies.
Anyways, I was in Florida over the Christmas vacation, and I was in, I was in, at grocery stores in the malls and stores, and every single mall, every single grocery store had one parking space for a veteran. You know, we go to Stop &amp; Shop, and we see, we see parking spaces for customers with children. Why can't we have one parking space for a veteran, just to show that we honor them and we, and thank you for our freedom? So, I just would love to see the stores around Revere dedicate one, just one veteran's parking space in front of this store. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excellent motion, Counselor, and I thank you on behalf of veterans in the city of Revere, anyway. But I just want to clarify, are we just talking about malls?
We talk about everything.
Well, well, those are, those are, those are public spaces on streets, the other ones are private property, so Traffic Commission would have to...
In parking spaces?
Yes.
I mean, in, in a parking lot?
No, no, and lots, lots that are privately owned.
I'm just talking about, like, Stop &amp; Shop and Market Desk, it, well...
So, point of information?
It just doesn't say that, so just trying to clarify it, because I think it's a great motion, but we can't do it on, on the streets like Shirley Ave where the beaters are.
No, no, I'm not asking for that.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Strip malls and malls.
I'm talking about malls and grocery stores, oh, sorry.
So, you point, Council Moravito.
Thank you, good point, thank you.
So, by point, for example, Lowe's, Home Depot, they own their property, and they designate veteran parking, so it would be...
They do?
Yeah, they do. So, they own it, so Stop &amp; Shop, there's a separate owner. Like Harley-Davidson, there's an owner of that whole lot, like where Harley-Davidson is, where the Big Easy is, there's an owner who owns, it's private property, it's not city property, so you would have to make a mandate, I guess, or kind of make an ordinance or request it.
It's a request, it's a simple request.
It's a simple request.
That's it. Counsel Rotundo.
I totally agree with this, first and foremost. I do think it's a request. I also think we could probably put an ordinance in place. Although Counselor, to my left cannot speak on the issue, I can tell you that he's probably enthralled about it, considering he's a Bronze Star recipient and veteran himself of the Afghan camp, campaign. That said, I would hope to vote this up.
All in favor? Oh, Counsel Rizzo. I, you know, thank you very much, Mr. President. I just had one question, and I totally agree with it. But I'm just curious, you know, like, like, when you have a space with, like, a handicap parking, right? So you'll have a placard or a plate, whatever. Like, how, I mean, is this something that's going to be enforceable, or is this just something that's going to be, like, nice to do? Like, I mean, what would the, like, would they have to have a veteran's plate? Would they have to apply for a veteran's placard? Would they, like, how, how would this work so that people just wouldn't take advantage of it? Because you know people park in handicap spots as it is right now, which is extremely egregious, but like, like, someone might just think, oh, well, that's a spot close, right? So how is this enforced? Do you, have you, have you given any thought?
So my nephew is a Marine for nine years, and he has a veteran's plate and a veteran's sticker on his car. So it would have to be enforced by a veteran plate, yes.
Yeah. Point of personal privilege?
State your point.
I believe in Florida and other states, they utilize the, the actual, you know, plate. So anybody who has a veteran's plate would be able to park in a veteran's spot. And I believe that if we put this down as a recommendation and then work on an ordinance, I think it'll kind of befit everybody.
Mr. President, I just wanted to clarify for Counsel McKenna. I totally understand that, like, but, you know, just hypothetically, right? This isn't about me, obviously. I'm just thinking about people like me. Like, I have six years active duty, but I don't have a veteran's plate, or I don't have a sticker on my car. So, like, would another veteran, who is a veteran, a legitimate veteran, or an active duty, that doesn't have a plate, I mean, how would we, like, how would that be?
Well, we, we do it for parking. I mean, I have a red sticker for Beachmont. If a person-
So you come up with stickers for veterans or something?
Yeah, if a person doesn't have a personal, you know, veteran's plate, I'm sure that we could design something as, as a city to give them a sticker that says that they're a veteran. So, I mean, there are, there are many ways that we could do this.
What I'd like to do, since there's, seems to be a discussion on it, if you don't mind, I'd like to put it in a subcommittee, Public Safety, I think. We can, Veteran Affairs, how's that? Veteran Affairs, how's that? Let's put that in Veteran Affairs. Thank you. Next motion.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counsel Fiori that the mayor direct the police chief to assign two traffic officers to the intersection of North Shore Road and Revere Street weekly, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 3:30 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. Alternatively, that the police chief coordinate with the MBTA police and/or mass state police to assign officers for this purpose.
Mr. President.
Counsel Fiori.
Let me say, that didn't take long. Welcome back. Anyways, Mr. President, on this motion, I find it disheartening that a department have come before this council and questioned the motives of a counselor, but he'll get his attaboyes on the mayor's office tomorrow. But on this motion, Mr. President.
Let's move forward.
Mr. President, this is a matter of quality of life. It can take from Revere Beach Boulevard, the old Sullivan Park, City Field, 20 minutes to get from the beach or five traffic signals down to the corner of Revere Street and North Shore Road, and that affects the people of the Boulevard, the people of the Point of Pines, the people of Oak Island. And it's not just a summer issue, it's a year-round issue. And conversely, on the other side, Revere Street can back up to, all the way to St. Anthony's, or even the Socorro Club, or further. So, and the reason I ask for a four-hour window, and those can be changed by the police chief of whomever, reason I ask for a four-hour window, because I would assume that they'd have to give a four-hour detail shift. So I would ask, in the interest of the public good, that this be adopted, that the police chief either provide the staff or work with the MBTA, or the state police to assign officers for said issue. I know in the past, the MBTA has done such, so I would ask the support of the members, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Maravido.
Thank you. Yeah, I recall a time in the past where they actually had people direct the traffic. I wasn't, I'm not sure if it's MBTA, or if it was Revere Police. It was during Mayor Rizzo's administration. I'm not sure what happened, but it was, I found it effective. Right now, if you're going, traveling north up 1A, and you take the left lane only to go up Revere Street, when the green, when there's a green arrow, you only, it only allows four cars at the most to pass. So it causes congestion. So having someone physically there to direct detail will be an improvement, and it is a quality-of-life issue, so I am in full favor of this motion.
Counsel Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with this, and I thank you, Counsel Fiori, for putting this in. This has been a burden for all my folks in Ward Two, trying to get north during those hours, and seeing the traffic back up, up North Shore Road and VFW Parkway is unbelievable. And this is a point of severity, actually, at this location, because this is what backs up everything going north at those hours. And I think it's a good idea. I know when it was done before with the T, it was because when they were building the T garage, they wanted to get traffic moving away from that location. So I think it's a good idea, and I hope it works. Thank you.
Counsel Rizzo. Thank you, Mr. President. And yes, Counsel Maravido is absolutely right. They did have MBTA police out there, as Counsel Novoselfsky just alluded to. And this is something that I, I, well, seemingly, I've been bringing it up for decades now, as far as that bottleneck down there at North Shore Road and Revere Street. But four years ago, I remember bringing it up here at a city council meeting with all this proliferation of building down on the beach, and the problem was getting worse and worse and worse. And I know Counsel Fiori and I had been talking about this even before he ever thought about running for, you know, for city council, because he lives down there on the Boulevard, about how bad it was getting. And I remember four years ago, putting a motion in to try to address this problem, and not to, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to speak ill of the, of the former counselor, but he assured me that there were plans and discussions going on down in Ward Five to address the problem with traffic, and all it's done is got worse. So we really do need to do something. This is a real quality-of-life issue, and it takes somebody from the Point of Pines to get down to the center of the city, sometimes 30, 40 minutes. That's, that's just not right. We're a very geographically small city, and they shouldn't have to go through this. So if it worked, as Counsel Maravido alluded to, with the MBTA police during the construction of that garage, it can work now. It's just a matter of having the will to put those police down there and pull traffic. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Sylvester.
And I'd like to give Counsel Fiori attaboy on this motion. I do agree with his motion. And as Counsel Rizzo alluded to, it is our geographical location in that area that puts us in a bind. And, you know, it is just as much of a resident issue here as it is people that are cutting through our city, making it even worse. But I'd, I'd like to also say, if we're going to do it in that location, another spot that needs it, and it's an all-day thing, is the Dunkin' Donuts on Shirley Ave, the light coming off of Beach Street, and the light that meets on the highway there. The cars just keep coming. The, the traffic flows right, and you end up almost dead in the middle, stuck, because the, the light that's coming from the location where Counsel Fiori wants to have the, the traffic, yeah, is, is just, they don't stop. They continue to, if they get a red light, they continue to flow through that light. And living on that side of the city, I find myself getting stuck in the middle of the road, having to go into the only place that you can go, which is illegal. But you either get stuck in the middle, or you drive in that middle lane. So I think it is a good motion, and I think we do need to look at it in several other locations as well.
Okay. Counsel Rotundo.
American Legion Highway and Beach Street, as Counsel Novoselfsky laughs. It, no, because, no, we all agree on the same thing. We all been in the same area, got the sun in our face, and have to go in the middle. So that's a very dangerous area. So hopefully, we can do signalizations throughout the city. Thank you.
Counsel President Vincorati. Welcome.
Naming, naming address for the record.
Rockville, 55 to Skonto Ave.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize my dear friend, Al. Al, 30 years ago, I was in my 40s. You were quite a spokesman back then, but this is 30 years later. 30 years later in city council, since I've been in Revere for 50 years. It's the same old story. Traffic, 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 building, building, building. And taxes, it's a way of life.
Yes.
It's a way of life. You can't understand that you keep on tabling things, table things, table things.
Is there a comment on the motion?
On and on and on and on. There's one thing I would like to say.
Is it, is it pertaining to the motion? That's all I really care about at this point.
Well, it is pertaining to the traffic, I'm pertaining to the motion.
This particular motion. I know we have traffic. We're, we're a city that can't remove the traffic. We're talking about this particular motion. Is it something pertaining to this motion? That's all I'm asking. Thank you. Okay. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counsel Cogliandro that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to amend the residential parking program to allow for non-resident customers patronizing business establishments with liquor licenses beyond 12 a.m. to park their vehicles without receiving a ticket and/or being towed.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few months ago, we, I received complaints about customers. We have, we have a few businesses that are inside of residential areas. Example would be Patriot Civic Club, Metolopos, Sons of Revere. I did receive complaints that people that were patronizing those places after 12 a.m. that were from outside of the city were getting ticketed, and I was wondering if there's a way that we can help these businesses to allow these patrons from outside the city to be able to stay without worrying about getting a parking ticket. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate this motion here, as well, for some of the residents, or some of the businesses just off Broadway. You know, Valari Restaurant is one particularly, we talked about a month back, where the 12 o'clock ordinance comes into play right around, you know, they close their business at 12, but sometimes if their employees aren't getting out until 12:31. So just talking to Parking Department, they were starting to hit their more residential areas first, and then hitting the business areas later, which was typically after 2 a.m. So it wasn't, it seemed to have resolved itself, but might be a good adjustment to the ordinance to protect those businesses. Thank you. Good, good, good motion, Counselor.
Any questions moving forward? All in favor, all opposed? So order. Next motion.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counsel Cogliandro that the mayor request the Department of Planning and Community Development to invest in Jacobs Park on Hastings Street by installing upgrades such as trash barrels, dog waste dispensers, additional lighting, potentially a dog park, and a walking path.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the coming weeks, I will lose this area to Counsel Fiori. It'll become Ward Five. But it's something that I've had my eye on doing since the first time I ever ran for office. Jacobs Park, if you don't know, it's down the end of the side streets off of Revere Street. It's a beautiful piece. It's about .3 miles. In the past, it's had littering issues, bulk dumping, homeless encampments. The DPW's done an amazing job down there, and I think we could spruce it up a little bit with some trash barrels, you know, as the motion says. So I hope everybody would consider making that area a lot nicer. Thank you.
Any comments? No? All on the motion? All in favor, all opposed? So order.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counsel Keefe that the following ordinance amendment be ordered to a public hearing, an ordinance amending metered rates of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I recuse myself of this.
Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we have some newer members on the council this session. This was something that was discussed for almost five months. It went to multiple subcommittees, came out favorably from multiple joint subcommittees with much discussion. We had many public hearings and public meetings where every resident that did speak was in favor. We had zero opposition. And I understand, this isn't a one-size-fits-all for the future water rates for the city. I think this is some somewhat temporary relief for some of the, you know, upwards of potentially 30 properties. We got an estimate of about, it would probably cost the city approximately $130,000 to $140,000 if, on possibly a high point. But I think that this, this does give back to some of the owner-occupied properties in the city. And again, we spent five months on it. I was disappointed it wasn't able to come out before the end of the session, so I'm hoping to start it early, so we can give, we can give these residents the relief they so deserve. Thank you.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you. As I recall, there were, I believe, three or four residents that were here that were in favor of this. I will say, however, there are well over 1,000 people that actually rent an apartment and pay their water bill, and they don't get any relief from that. They vote, they pay their taxes in the city, and more importantly, it's the representation of this community that we do, not just for a select group of people. It's also why I believe in a tiered water rate. You get charged for what you use, and those seniors in particular, and Malden are paying less than they are in Revere, using basically the same amount of water. And so if we're going to do anything to restructure our water rate for anybody, we should do it for the entire city based upon a fair and equitable process called a tiered system. It's done in well over 10 communities in Massachusetts and elsewhere throughout the United States, and it's based upon your usage. It also decreases the usage that residents in this community would use, because they're going to watch their volume. Thank you.
This is going to get referred to a public hearing on January 24th.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counsel Maravido that the mayor request the Board of Health to look into implementing a temporary citywide indoor mask mandate to help slow the surge in COVID-19 cases. Masks have been proven to reduce the risk that unvaccinated and vaccinated people will be infected with COVID. This will help protect our most vulnerable population.
Counsel Maravido.
Thank you, as most know, as most people know, the primary purpose of wearing a mask is to protect people around you, and also, it's about protecting yourself, which a mask is 20 to 30% effective. And, but more importantly, it's about the people around you and making the whole community safe. As a city, we have almost 60,000 residents. We are a transit-oriented city with six different bus routes transporting people to and from our city each day. We have a ridership on the blue line of 8000, 8300 daily, and that's down because of the COVID cases. And we have three subways in Revere. I feel strongly, until our city is confident about the state of the pandemic and feels there's no measures, and feels, I think, basically, just looking at it, we need to see a dramatic decrease in COVID cases. Right now, everyone knows someone who is catching it. The Omicron variant is so transmissible that we need to act as leaders of this city. Every cities in the surrounding cities have a mask mandate. And I see Counsel Rotundo smiling, laughing. I pay him, give him the utmost respect when he's speaking. I don't make jokes at him or laugh at him, but he's laughing at me, because he's, he doesn't believe- doesn't believe in this, so obviously. But I'm passionate about this, because it's not the most popular issue. It's a hot topic. But I'm representing the people, because I have to make a stand when I see the most vulnerable people in our population affected by this, and we need to react. We're a neighboring city to Boston. People are tra, our neigh, neighboring, our hospitals are overloaded with patients. We need to do our part, being so close to the city, and do whatever we can. The evidence is clear that masks ask as a protector, you know, against COVID. You know, the public health metrics are trending in a horrible direction, and we need to act. So, I would ask my colleagues to join me in voting for this recommendation, and asking the Board of Health, um, to enforce a mandate.
Thank you, Mr., uh, Counsel Morabito. Counsel Rotundo?
First, I will take a point of personal privilege, and I want to reassure you, Counsel Morabito, I was actually laughing with Jerry, because I wanted to speak.
Because he wanted to speak.
And that was, and that was the whole thing.
I apologize, then.
Yes. But I, I, I will say, uh, I would like it to go to committee. Um, I will say that I agree with you. Omicron is a variant that we have to be very concerned with, as it is highly transmissible. There's no doubt about that. Um, I, I guess the issue of a mask mandate in the House is going to be answered, uh, you know, after debate and so forth. I, I will tell you, thankfully, the city of Revere is 80% vaccinated, and that's a very good thing, and I hope we can get to 100% vaccinated. Um, that said, um, if you'd like to put in committee, uh, Mr. President, I'm, I'm welcome to do that, or I can debate it on the floor if you'd like. It, it's all up to you all.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for those who don't know, I run Revere Karate Academy, and right now, half of my enrollment is out because either the student themselves or their family member has COVID. I, uh, we've been wearing masks now for the last week, uh, and I just, I fully support this, this motion, and, uh, I hope everyone else does too. Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, I'm going to put this in...
Through you, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, just to make a point of information. So, our average seven-day ca, cases of COVID has increased three times in just a matter of a week. Three times. I, I think this is a matter, this recommenda...
I, I understand that.
Mr. President, I, I feel this is a ma, a ma, this recommendation is a matter of urgency, and I ask for a roll call.
Point taken. Mr. President, may I speak? Counsel Rotundo? This mask here, I want everybody to Google this. I want you to Google the size of a virus. No, Mr. President, stop. A size of a virus. It is .01 micron. An N95, which you use to protect yourself from tuberculosis, the one that Mr. Chiamello's wearing, only protects you to .3. The average human breaths 11,000 liters per day. Wearing a mask in a house with no air movement is not going to decrease the rates of transmission, because the droplet factor doesn't change. But if you want to go ahead with that, who's going to enforce it? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you. Uh, okay. Um, Counsel Morabito, while I appreciate your motion, and, and I understand it, um, we do have a Board of Health, uh, here that has done a tremendous job, uh, bringing us up to about 82% vaccinated. So, um, I believe that if they felt the need, okay, to enforce a, a mask mandate for the city of Revere, that they would have already have done so. Okay? And that being said, I'm happy to put it in committee, so we can have some discussions with the Board of Health and Lauren Buck, and, before making this decision for the rest of, of the city of Revere. That's where I stand on that.
Mr. President, but isn't there a roll on, roll call on the floor?
Is there a roll call on the floor?
He asked for a roll call, like, that happened, it's up...
Yes. I'm going to put this into committee. I'm going to put this in committee. Thank you.
So, a roll call is in, as Debut's rule says, a roll call is, if there's a roll call, ask for it, that needs to be followed through with, Madam Clerk.
Uh-huh. Yes.
Since when?
Next motion?
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counsel Morabito, that the mayor request the Department, uh, the Department of Public Health to establish a designated emergency warming center in the winter months to protect people experiencing homelessness from being exposed to extremely cold temperatures and deadly winter conditions.
Well, uh, the city just implemented a warming station designated at the senior center. But I think that's a, to go back on my previous motion, it's a total cop-out, cop-out not voting on this tonight. I'm sorry.
Your point is taken. Thank you. Counsel Silvestri?
Uh, just on this motion here, I, it's, it's a great motion. Um, I, I didn't hear about the senior center becoming a warming station, um, but I, I, the one thing I would say about the senior center becoming a warming station, um, what are the hours going to be? Uh, we were talking, discussing this early, and, um, uh, the next week or so, it's going to be the coldest it's, has been in years overnight. And, um, I, I think we need to look into maybe putting up, like, a milis, military-style tent in, in an open area for the people that have nowhere to go, um, during the night is, is the most important. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Rotundo?
To that end, as, uh, Counsel Silvestri, who's been pretty much involved in the homelessness issue, and I've worked with him once or twice on it, what I can tell you is that there is a large population in the Shirley Ave and Wonderland area, and I got, uh, Joe Lake obviously acknowledging it, because he's dealt with it as well. And I, I think the quickest that we can, in, in order to get the military-style tents that they were using down at Suffolk Downs and put them down at Wonderland, and i, in that section in particular, we're going to save lives. I mean, right now, it's very difficult to get ALS into the city, never mind having to deal with other issues. On another matter, I, I, I would be more than happy to vote yes on your motion tonight, Stephen. Um, however, I, I don't want to supersede the authority of the, uh, public health nurse. Thank you.
Point of information. So, what I was told was, um, the mayor said there was a designated warming spot, which is the senior center, and it's used during emergency situations on cold and dangerous weather, so, and I was unaware of that.
And I think the issue is, uh, through you, Mr. President, that you, you have to factor in the ability for people to actually travel from one section of the city to the senior center, and that becomes an issue too.
All in favor, all opposed on the motion? So ordered. Um, I believe Counsel Serino has a point of personal privilege before we adjourn for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, just a point of personal privilege. At the beginning of the meeting, the election commissioner did say it, but I just want to remind the people of Revere that tomorrow, Tuesday, January 11th, is an election day. Here in the city, we will be going to the polls to, uh, choose our, the final candidate or the final, uh, person to fill Senator Joe Boncorrie's vacant Senate seat. So, we will be going to the polls tomorrow from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at our normal polling, uh, location to vote for state senator. So, please, it'll be cold tomorrow, but please remember to get out to vote. Thank you.
One location?
No, guys, um, the one location is for the next election, which is the voc. So, let's not confuse everybody. Tomorrow, there is an election for senator. That will be at all our normal polling places. The one on the 25th in two weeks will be at St. Anthony's, but tomorrow is your specific polling location.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you. I'd like to make a, uh, point of personal privilege, please. Um, I would just like to, um, say, we lost a, a really important senior, very active in the community, uh, very popular, Roseanne Colonino, and I would like to say, uh, I'm sorry. And, um, maybe we could stand up for a... Thank you.
I didn't know that.
Thank you.
And we are adjourned to the next, uh, council meeting on Monday, January 24th. Thank you.